Absent, riser.
Present.
Fee of form.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since this adoption of the agenda, I want to draw attention to the fact that we did add some materials to the meeting packet sort of in the, towards the end. So if you printed out your materials, you may want to look and see, but if you're looking online, there are some additional materials that were added as recently as this afternoon. Is there any other change or additions to the agenda? If not, is someone prepared to move the draft agenda?
I would move the agenda.
All right, moved by riser. Support by Brazil, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Supposed. Agenda is adopted. You have communications received. Are there any comments on those?
Oh, yes. The email from Larry Murdy. Here it is. Yeah, regarding the bin, I guess it's the end, it would be the BSNA invoice cloud, the $2 or 15 cents or $3, whatever you charge. Yeah, do we have, um. Is there a way to see how many people pay through the BSNA for, by check? Not the credit card protocol, but the check because there is. Okay, because it does make sense. If we're paying an admin fee, why are we charging people for checks?
Yeah, I thought the, I thought the letter raised some important questions, probably for our treasurer who's not here, but also for budget time in looking at that 1% admin fee.
Yes.
Because by statute, it's supposed to cover the assessing and tax collection costs as a whole. So we should look at that amount and see if it's covering that.
Yeah.
Assuming, assuming that treasurer is back, perhaps we can get a response at our next meeting to that question.
Okay.
From her.
But I, I think it, I think Larry, Larry and Terry raised a good point of just, you know, we need to get back to kind of annually reviewing our fees and making sure that we're recovering only the actual cost incurred.
Yeah, because Ann Arbor pays for, or they don't charge a fee for their invoice cloud for the checks. Now, credit cards are a different story because it's 2 to 3% based on the amount which that can be. Anyway.
Other comments, communications? Let's move on to public comment. This is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. Trustee Brazil, may I rely on you for timekeeping? So we begin with those who are present here in the hall, and then once all those who are present who would like to speak during public comments have had a turn, then we turn to those who are participating remotely. Please come forward.
Hello, Kathleen Brand, Cyo resident. I think tonight is a good night for gratitude. I'm, I'm sorry that trustee Noel isn't here tonight because.
I am so sorry about that.
So I, I wanted to express gratitude for trustee Noel because we just got the announcement that the EPA is looking at the Gelman Plume as a super fund site. And she has worked on that for literally years, and I don't think we thank her enough, and I think we should. I'd also like to thank clerk Flintoff for all the effort on the early voting. Nine days is a long time. That's a lot of coordination. That's a lot of people to get ramped up to do that work and to feed them and everything else you need to do. And I understand it went flawlessly, so I appreciate that. I'd like to thank trustee Brazil for your insightful knowledge, bringing your own research and knowledge regarding public benefits. You weren't here at the last meeting, but I did note that you enlightened me that EV charging stations are not a public benefit to the residents. I do have a hybrid, and of course I would never use that, but that's your insightful research, and I do appreciate it. We need to get a handle on what are true public benefits. And I'd like to thank trustee Carrie for all the work that she does to assist residents, individual residents, and to fix the roads committee. I did review that report. It's nice to cross the Ts and dot the Is and get those memberships correct. So I appreciate all of that. Thank you.
Who's next for public comment?
Judy Monk with the Cyo Township. I just have one question, and it has to do with the blighted Pizza Hut building. I have been here for just two and a half years, and it was blighted and atrocious two and a half years ago. It remains atrocious, a safety hazard, and an embarrassment to our community. And being that it's on a corner where across the street, it says, "Welcome to Cyo Township." Imagine what that communicates to not only our residents, but to anyone that's driving through and wants to join us. And so I asked the board to maybe update us on it or to take action on it. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Pam Boyd, an active and informed Cyo resident, Cyo community newsletter. Sunday evening, I opened the Cyo website to read the DDA Downtown Development Authority Agenda and Packet. It wasn't on the website. Monday morning, I again went to the website and knew shortly by 8:30, the noon agenda would be posted. Nope. I emailed a DDA member and was forwarded his copy. However, there was no Zoom link. I texted the clerk, who I believe was busy in a meeting. At 11:40, not finding a Zoom link, I headed to Township Hall for answers. I was told by the DDA chair that this was not his job to make sure the agenda and Zoom link were posted. He said that the elected officials of this township have given him no powers. What was he supposed to do? He asked. I suggested making sure he or someone confirms the agenda is posted. Nope. He passed the blame on to you guys. Our elected officials. Really? This is a committee made up of business owners. You would think business owners would have the know-how to effectively run a meeting. The unprofessional behavior of some of the Cyo committees over the last several years I've been attending meetings amazes me, and this was the final straw. Too many times, I've had to run to Township Hall to make sure Zoom attendees get access to the various meetings, among other issues. Supervisor Hathaway, as supervisor, you are the CEO of the DDA. As the CEO, are you responsible for seeing that the agenda and the Zoom link are posted in a timely fashion? As I found you at about 11:45 yesterday morning, well after my complaints, working on getting the agenda corrected, I'd say not. Cyo Township has given residents an option to attend Zoom for over three and a half years. The chairs of committees have been responsible for posting the agenda to the website for forever. None of these tasks are new or needing a rocket scientist to make happen. If the DDA chair has no authority, as he said, and as you as CEO are ineffective, maybe both of you should resign from the DDA. Does Cyo really need more excuses to look unprofessional? Oh, that's right, supervisor. It is your duty to be on the DDA. But just like it's your statutory duty to be the secretary of the Board of Review that you have chosen not to do for these past three years, because well, Cyo doesn't always do that that way. It's also your duty to be on the LASSA board, but you had a snip fit and resigned several weeks ago. Please help Cyo be more professional, including recording the DDA meetings that you have refused to do for so long. Oh, and one last thing. If you ever feel the need to call the sheriff on me again, like you did a year ago, a gray-haired woman over 65, feel free. The last man that did that to me did so because I had uncovered the truth about the fraud his company was perpetrating. After I shared the truth, his attorney suddenly relocated to Canada, and the company failed within six months. Truth and transparency are my weapons of choice.
Next for a public comment?
I'm having a difficult time with.
Is there no one else present who would like to speak during public comment?
Good evening. Dave Lutton, Cyo resident. I'm here to just briefly update you on the annexation request for the portion of the Sloan Kingsley property that we have in front of the Dexter City Council. I'm aware that tonight you're going to be asked to take action on a resolution from your subcommittee on annexation, and I understand why that resolution is being brought forward, and I don't oppose it at this time. The whole process is taking significantly longer than I anticipated that it would. But last week, I met with the Cyo Subcommittee. We introduced several conceptual models of what we're calling attainable housing for the annexation parcel, and they are studying those. The utility studies have been talked about for a long time are not yet complete. I'm told that they're close. That'll be another discussion point with Dexter Council. Investigations are proceeding regarding the feasibility of a new city well for Dexter on the annexation, the proposed annexation piece, and there are many other issues. The ball is clearly in Dexter's court on this one, and I'm just here to say that I understand that. And again, this is taking much longer than I thought it would. Earlier today, for the first time in last week's meeting with the Dexter group, was the first time I'd had contact with them in this many months-long process. Today, I met with your Subcommittee, and we had a good 40-minute or so discussion of a number of issues. And I think we all agreed that until Dexter brings forth a meaningful proposal to Cyo, that this is going to be off the table for Cyo for, for a while, and I understand that. There was one new piece that I mentioned to the Subcommittee today. I mentioned it last week to the LPC, which is considering a 105-acre application for a portion of the Sloan Kingsley property for your land preservation program. I mentioned it today with the three Subcommittee members, and I'll tell you as well this evening. I have expressed a flexibility regarding the LPC application and whether I would sell the land for less than the appraised value. And my response has been that I will perhaps do that. I will make a commitment to do that. I'm not getting into specific amounts, but I will make a commitment to do that when and if a meaningful annexation agreement between the Township and Dexter has made some progress. Just wanted to update you. Thank you for the time.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during the public comment period? Seeing no one, let's turn to those who are participating remotely.
All right. First up is Rob Pattinson, followed by Jonathan Greifer. Go ahead, Rob.
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, Cyo Township. The recent Fire SAD proposal was defeated at the polls, but we still have, in my opinion, an emergency situation in that our firefighters are not able to be dispatched safely. We are not in compliance with the two-in, two-out standard. We are three firefighters short of that. That was part of the Fire SAD, was to finally get our firefighters safe. Please consider whatever powers you have, whatever options you have. But we can, we have for three years now left our firefighters unsafe and, and sabotaged them at every turn. Can we please finally find a way to hire three more firefighters so that when they're dispatched to a fire, if two people are inside and something bad happens, there are two people outside who can save them? Right now, what we're asking our firefighters to do is to go to a fire, have a family beg them to save their house, and they have to make a decision. When they don't have four people present, they have to make a decision about running into a burning house and putting out a fire or waiting and watching it burn while the family's begging them. That is extremely unfair on our firefighters. Please find a way to get the funding, maybe from the general fund, maybe from bonds, who knows? But there has to be a way to find the money to get three more firefighters so that our current firefighters are safe. Please work on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Next up is Jonathan Greifer. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Hi, say, how's everyone doing?
Good.
You're not allowed to answer questions. So I just want to double-click on what, what Rob said. I think that we still have Is and Ts to dot and cross with regard to our fire station. I'd also like to double-click on what Pam said around the DDA meeting. It was a complete joke, the beginning of it. If we could please, in the future, have meetings and their contact Zoom numbers up before the meeting starts, that'd be nice. And finally, I'd like to remind the board that decisions need to be made around the Tree Fund. I know that there is, there are discussions going on, but before the funds are used for specific projects, it'd be great to know that there's a policy in place. Thank you. Have a great day, and appreciate all the great committee work that's been done over the last month.
Thank you, Jonathan. Is there anyone else that wants to speak at public comment? Raise your hand, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed one thing. Great election. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you, Jonathan. I see no hands raised.
Okay, then, let's move on to approval of minutes.
Couple, couple responses.
Oh, you wanted, I'm sorry. I didn't realize people wanted to respond to comments. So clerk Flintoff and then trustee Carrie.
Sure. One is, Joyce, I don't know if you're prepared to now, but if you, if you could give a brief update on the Pizza Hut. And the second thing I wanted to say was, just in regards to, again, the DDA, definitely, you know, the office. We will, we're meeting internally, Chris and Christie and I, to figure out how we can better support the DDA and accessibility, but, but I, I will say too, I think another time for the board to kind of engage with the DDA is going to be the budget process, because for several years, the, the DDA will need to come to the board to kind of present their budget. And I think it'd be nice at that point or at a different point to just kind of have a presentation from the DDA so that we can talk about some of these things, because we continue to get these questions about, you know, the DDA talking about the Tree Fund, the revolving fund, the Township monies, the access for the public. And I think we just need to work it out at some point. So that, that would be helpful either at budget season or with a presentation from the DDA to the board. And then the Pizza Hut, I just wanted to throw it out there. I don't know if you have an update.
The supervisor might have more information, but it's my understanding that Carlisle Warpin, there's a person on their staff that's focused specifically related to the Pizza Hut site. And in addition to that, with our code enforcement officer coming on board, we're going to have more of a focus in that area as well.
I, I can add a little bit to that, that the difficulty with the Pizza Hut, part of it is that it's now owned by an out-of-state entity that plans to replace that building with a auto repair supply business. And that's something that we're trying to, with the help of the person from Carlisle Warpin, move along more quickly, but it is difficult because it's an out-of-state corporation, and it's proven, it proved difficult to find them in the first place and then to get them to take action. But I agree, it's a blighted situation, blighted situation, and it's also not safe because people are coming and going from the building, and so we need to get that torn down. That's, the demolition of buildings like that is something that we work together with the county on because it's their building department that can condemn buildings that need to be torn down. Trustee Carrie, you wanted to come in?
Well, yeah, I was going to ask about the Pizza Hut, but, um, so has this company presented plans to the Township regarding the auto repair?
I'm not sure what stage those are at, but they're, if so, it's at a very early stage. And so what we're trying to, what we've been trying to do is get them to tear it down in the meantime and clear the site.
Okay, that's one of the, the other was, just beat me to it for both of those, the DDA. Yeah, and regarding, I think maybe we need to have some type of policies and procedures for committees to make sure that we're all on the same page as far as when we have the agenda out, make sure Zoom links, and everybody knows how to use them, or specific people. And the other thing is there's issues with minutes not being posted. They should be the draft within, you know, the first five days or eight days or whatever. And then when the minutes are approved, they have to make sure that the chair gets that over to Christie. And Christie's going to need a backup person as well, because, you know, when she's takes some time off, then things get, you know, she runs the show here.
Now we know.
Yeah. That's it. Thanks.
All right, let's move on to approval of the minutes. We have a regular meeting of October 24th. The draft minutes, are there, does anyone have corrections they'd like to offer? I have one, a very small correction on page six of the minutes. Notice there's, I think it's meant to be in my bullet point, the fourth one from the bottom of the page. I think it's making the condition unenforceable as opposed to the conditional.
Yes.
That's the only thing I noticed. Are there any other corrections?
I would move approval with that question.
Moved by riser. Okay, support by Brazil or Carrie. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Minutes are approved. That brings us to the consent agenda. Is someone prepared to move the consent agenda?
I would move the consent agenda.
Moved by riser.
Oh, no, we're okay. Was it no for something earlier? Yep.
So are you supporting them? Okay, support by Carrie. We'll have a roll call vote for this.
Okay, for our rules, we're starting with Hathaway tonight. Hathaway?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Brazil?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Consent agenda adopted, 5-0.
Okay. This brings us to reports, and our first report is two-part report from Fire Chief. Thank you, board. Second to get this up for you.
Great, thank you, board, for the time this evening. I apologize in advance. My report will be changing as we transition reporting providers. I get different data out in different formats, so what you see now will be very different than what you see in a year from now. And as we work through that process, I lose some components of the reporting and gain some. Two quarters we're talking about, second and third quarter of the year. 809 incidents total, majority in Cyo as usual. We responded outside the community 35 times to assist our neighbors and requested mutual aid 18 times over that time period. Here's our category breakdown by month. Fires being at the top. And total calls. A couple points of note here. If we look at February, we see our total calls were much higher than usual. That correlates with an ice storm we had in February. We had significant hazardous conditions calls, and again in July, windstorm. So we will see a couple pages later, their numbers are up, but I think a lot of that relates to those two calls or those two periods of time. Talk about some incidents, and these are just major incidents. I don't report on all our building fire calls, as many of them are what we would consider minor, don't take a lot of resources, but April 10th, we responded to Chelsea to assist them on a brush fire that had spread to a structure. If you remember, this spring again was warm and dry, which led to a lot of brush fires and some that even spread to buildings, as this one did in Chelsea. We provided tanker and water with that incident. April 29th, we assisted Ann Arbor City on multiple structures on fire on North Maple Road. I think everybody probably remembers that incident, but they had several buildings destroyed by fire. That incident, probably four hours to contain and bring under control on required resources from the majority of Washington County. Our crews were out there for several hours that evening. And with our callback and our folks back in the station, we were able to handle calls in Cyo during that time period. June, I'm sorry, yeah, June 7th, again, Chelsea, Structure Fire Provincial Drive. This home had a significant fire. This was just either right inside Chelsea or just outside the city limits, but it was a significant fire. Early morning fire began in a garage and destroyed quite a significant portion of the home. June 19th, we responded with our tanker to the area of M14 and Ford Road in Superior Township to assist on a structure fire. Again, our mutual aid pact goes all over the county. They had an area without municipal water where they had a significant structure fire. We were called to assist there. Fortunately, they got it under control just before we arrived and were able to return. August 10th, we assisted Dexter on a barn fire on Zeb Road. That barn was a total loss in that incident. August 20th, we assisted Chelsea on a structure fire on Trinkly Road, and I hope I pronounced that correctly. The home was unoccupied and an older farm home. They were using it for some, for housing some, some other animals at the time, and they believe that a heat lamp knocked over, started that fire. September 14th, we assisted Ann Arbor Township on a carbon monoxide incident. Heating system malfunction causing a home to fill with carbon monoxide. The two occupants of the home were incapacitated. Cleaning company came, discovered them on the ground. Ann Arbor Township was called. And when they arrived on scene, they recognized it was a hazardous environment and requested assistance from both us and Ann Arbor City. Two victims were removed. I don't know the conditions of those victims, but they were seriously ill. We did search the structure for additional occupants, monitored the air and helped ventilate the building after the source of the carbon monoxide leak was detected and stopped. And again, during the response of late July, the And again, during the response of late July, uh, the storm response, we responded over sixty calls in a three-day period, generally hazardous condition calls. However, we had four carbon monoxide incidents in SIO. And they were generally all caused by generators being run too close to a home to power the home. That did fill the homes with carbon monoxide. Thankfully, uh, in every one of these incidents, the homeowners had working carbon monoxide alarms and were alerted to the incident, uh, the emergency before they became incapacitated. Our average response time, this is through quarter three of the year, ten minutes and forty-nine seconds. That's from the time of a nine-one-one call till we arrive on scene. Call processing time, two minutes and five seconds, and our average time for when we're notified of a call or an emergency to our arrival is eight minutes, twenty seconds. Uh, quarters two and three, twenty twenty-two over twenty twenty-three, you can see we're up over a hundred incidents. I think uh, quite a bit of that uh, does belong to our uh, two significant storms. I'd like to say that uh, those were isolated incidents, but I'm not sure that they are. Uh, they, the uh, storm incidents like that may become more normal than not. This chart here correlates with uh, what you have on the very top, uh, top row being fires uh, and so on down. You can see the fourth line down is our hazardous conditions calls up two hundred and forty-two percent year over year. Uh, fires up twenty-five percent, but total year over year calls, uh, year to date are fifteen point seven percent up from last year. I like to talk about where we respond to, our busiest area of SIO Township, section two of this map. And I always like to give you a heat map of where we respond. Uh, darker red areas, more responses, uh, lighter areas, less responses. That board, if there's any questions, uh, I'd be happy to answer with them.
Um, so you, first of all, I want to thank you for always focusing on performance metrics, and you've been consistent over the last three years that you've been here, so I, it's helped me learn a lot. Um, and I know that the six-minute response time is one of your benchmarks. Can you talk a little bit about, you know, the average response time being ten minutes, forty-nine seconds? I mean, how often do we make our six-minute goal, and what is the practical difference for somebody, six minutes versus ten minutes?
So, so that, that metric is derived from national standards, NFPA standards. Uh, we've got a certain amount of time from when we receive a call until we arrive on scene. And based on the call type, there's a little bit of difference in how long it can take us to get out the door. For example, if we're going to a fire call, then we have an extra thirty seconds because it takes more time to put out the gear. Excuse me. Uh, so that being said, um, you know, uh, our objective is basically to get to your home, four minutes driving down the road, and um, between one and two minutes to get out the door. Um, that can make a significant difference on the outcome of a call. Uh, studies show that um, brain death occurs in a cardiac arrest victim in under six minutes. So without bystander CPR and uh, arriving on scene with a defibrillator, that six minutes is a, is a pivotal mark for that. As an example, you'll hear about this uh, in our fourth quarter report, we responded to a cardiac arrest call that was blocked from the fire station. Uh, bystander CPR in progress, uh, the, the victim of that call, uh, we were able to resuscitate along with uh, Huron Valley ambulance. And he's home, uh, in a matter of weeks and back to work. If that call is a ten-minute response time for us, I don't know the outcome would be the same. Uh, fire, uh, same situation, a fire grows exponentially, so if we can get to a fire scene and contain the fire uh, in two to three minutes, four minutes, five minutes, we've got a much better success rate of not only saving the structure, preventing damage, but also rescuing occupants who may be in the structure. Uh, if it takes us ten to twelve minutes to get to a structure fire, that's, that's an uncontained structure fire, the outcome, the successful outcome is a lot less likely. Thank you. Any other questions, board? Thank you.
Yeah, uh, so yesterday, it was yesterday, there, there was a yeah, it was Monday, um, a, a bad accident on Dexter Ann Arbor Road.
Yes.
And there was um, a life that was lost.
Correct, yes.
Um, what's, what are the statistics over the year of people that have died? And is there any type of um, help for our fire, firefighters that experience these deaths?
Mental health support.
So, yeah, I've got a couple, I think, can you, can you articulate the first part of your question again?
Um, no.
Are you asking often?
How often, yeah, how often, um, within a year, how many deaths? Just in general.
Boy, that's a, that's a hard question to answer. Um, I betcha we've run quality assurance reports on a dozen cardiac arrests this year. Several fatal car accidents, including uh, two in the last month. It, it's not infrequent, I'll say that. Um, we do, we do have uh, both external, we have external supports on critical incidents like that. We can call a, a critical incidents press debriefing team in, uh, if the crew fits, if it's necessary for the crew. Uh, that we work with the Washington County Sheriff's Department, the dispatchers will all get together, and oftentimes we use this room here uh, for that debriefing. Um, and also we have an, an employee assistance program if someone does need more. Uh, if that's not a, an appropriate resolution, we can go through uh, the CISD program. Thank you.
To our regular reports, um, and we have written materials um, in the uh, meeting packet. Um, and there may be an opportunity for those uh, who do not have time to carry with the materials to offer oral report at this time.
Yeah, um, the planning commission, and I'll submit it to Christie. Uh, we had one action last night, and that is that we reviewed and recommended approval for the board of a site plan by Slim Chickens. That's about a three thousand uh, square foot, what I would call fast casual from our meeting last time, restaurant, located at Zeb Road in Arbor Chase. It's gonna have a drive-through that's located off Arbor Chase, and the uh, conditions were that they or conditions were that they follow the recommendations that OHM and Carlisle Warpin made regarding the sewer, the water uh, easement, that they locate a tree that might impact future maintenance of water services that um, that they uh, do what OHM is recommending regarding landscaping, that they plant natural, they wanna plant turf grass behind it between, between the uh, parking lot and the apartment complex, but to the extent possible that they consider using native plantings instead. That's it, we'll come to this board. Um, it was a, I think it was a five to one vote uh, in favor with the no vote by a commissioner who is just opposed to drive-throughs anywhere in the town. Thank you. And I, that'll be a written report, pretty short one, that's what I would say.
Like Flintoff?
Um, yeah, just briefly, um, thank you to everybody for pitching in on the November seventh election township-wide, a great effort. Um, a lot of long days, and it paid off. We had wonderful turnout, uh, thirty-four percent turnout, and for a special election on a local issue, um, that, that dwarfs any other turnout we've had before. Typically, for these sorts of measures, you get like thirteen, fifteen percent, so thirty-four percent turnout was a very good showing by SIO residents. Um, I'll provide a more in-depth report um, at our next meeting. Also, um, at our next meeting, I'm gonna provide a proposed committee appointment protocol. Uh, I have an example from the county, which you're welcome to see, but just kind of procedurally to have a process where we, you know, we know when our vacancies are coming up per committees, so so many days ahead of time to notify the public, to have applications come in, to just kind of get them on more of a schedule. And we hope to um, receive some bids for a new auditing firm by this Friday. So if all goes well, we should have that at the November or December meeting upcoming. Um, I included two written reports, um, including the corrective action plan, um, which Joyce and the treasurer and PM Gap and I worked on. Um, so I did wanna ask if there are any questions from the board about kind of the corrective actions we need to take?
There should be, uh, I did read through regarding some of the issues, um, checks and balances. Are we, we're working on that to keep uh, everybody in their own lane, so to speak? So treasury, can the clerk's office, as far as finances go?
I have certainly done my best, and it has been insufficient. In the corrective action plan, um, you know, certainly working on internal controls is continuing. I think the actionable things that we have are related to better coordination, in particular with um, the land preservation efforts, um, because that's where I think developing a grants policy, capital assets policy, um, PM Gap is helping us with that. Um, and utility billing, Lori Carey has already implemented some good procedures there to deal with those. Um, so those are, those are outlined there. I think that I just wanna give the board a heads up that there'll be, over the next year, you know, few policies and procedures will wanna get adopted.
So, thanks for this, by the way. Should this be an agenda item in a few months to see where we are, just to kind of check in on?
That's fine.
Or just a report?
Yeah, absolutely enough, yeah.
It's a good idea. Just to keep us on track.
Right.
And maybe to um, add to uh, for Flintoff's comments, uh, one of the things that we're gonna be doing is um, requesting um, a firm to support us with writing policies and procedures, standard operating procedures. And as part of that process, with some of the issues um, related to the corrective action plan, it can be addressed as part of that process, too.
Good, thank you. Yep.
I wanna draw attention to uh, one item that was added to reports late, and that is a uh, Gelman report from trustee Knoll, um, as was mentioned during public comment. Sort of the highlight of that is that the Environmental Protection Agency um, has um, ranked the Gelman site as being a, a super fun site, uh, and this will allow um, for more aggressive federal uh, action to help clean up the, the site and, and do remediation, or require remediation, I should say. And I did not repair, prepare a report, but there, the, the DDA uh, board did meet yesterday. First of all, I want to apologize for the the lack of uh, uh, an agenda and meeting materials being posted. Um, we struggled with that, um, and it was sort of a cascading series of uh, problems that we encountered, uh, trying to resolve that. Uh, but as clerk Flintoff said, we will be talking internally about how to um, learn from that and um, do better in the future. Uh, in particular with the DDA board's meeting materials. Um, but the DDA um, board did uh, a deal with several things that um, will be coming to a future board meeting. Uh, not a DDA board meeting, but a board of trustees meeting. Uh, one of them is the request from the DDA for um, reimbursement for a cost of planting trees along Jackson Boulevard as part of the use of the tree fund. Um, and that, I agree, does raise questions about the, or lack of a policy for the use of those funds, but I know that there is an effort to try and address that as well, independent of the DDA.
When is that request coming?
Right, board? Probably the twenty-eighth, I would imagine, our next regular meeting.
Is there a guarantee that those trees that are planted close together won't die, and then we'll have?
Well, it's, I don't know that anyone can guarantee that, but the DDA did um, approve at, at the meeting yesterday, um, extra expenditure, expenditure to have watering of those freshly planted trees done to make sure that they survive.
Well, they're pretty close together, that's my big, big concern.
Well, then, that's a specific question I'm not prepared to address. Um, and um, the DDA is also, um, there's a proposal from the DDA, I understand now more clearly, um, to request that the, that this board um, set in place or set in motion, uh, special assessment district for Dino Drive, for the retaping of Dino Drive, for a portion of the cost of that. Um, the um,
What portion?
Of what portion of the cost?
I mean, I mean, why would it be a portion? Why aren't they asking us to assess the whole thing?
Because the DDA itself um, has allocated funds to pay for, I think, half of the projected cost, but I don't know that that will be the projected cost at the time of the SCD, so I'm not sure that it will, at that time, be half.
I'm gonna piggyback, piggyback on what you're saying. So tomorrow, um, for, we have a road advisory committee at six thirty, if anybody wants to join. And uh, on the agenda, we are working on a se- a special assessment policy. Um, we're polishing that up, so I think this is, that would be a good thing to have in place, but also we're possibly hiring a project manager today, tonight, and maybe the project manager and along with our manager can oversee the special assessment process.
Okay, um, another thing from the DDA is actually, um, coincidentally, um, there is a special meeting of the DDA scheduled for the first Monday in December. And that purpose of that special meeting is to discuss staffing for the DDA, probably a proposal for um, hiring a consultant um, to handle some of the administrative tasks of the DDA. And that may be part of addressing the issue of meeting materials and getting the agenda posted and so on.
What, what, I'm sorry, what date did you say again?
The first Monday, I believe it's the fourth of December. And um, it'd be at the regular DDA meeting time of noon. And I believe this is scheduled to occur in this room. And
Well, where, where generally is the DDA at in um, wanting to request an extension?
Well, that's part of the task, the scope of work for this consultant. Um, that was discussed, but um, I think that will be clarified at the December fourth meeting.
Okay.
We sort of recommend, the issue came up yesterday, and they recognized that it was gonna take, uh, you know, um, pretty much a meeting to just, to, to discuss and to evaluate proposals as well, so that's how we came up with this special meeting.
So there's two, there's two different um, ones for administration and ones for?
No, it would be, it'd be part of the scope of work for some, someone, perhaps a consultant um, hired to support the DDA. One of the tasks would be helping with um, what's involved with extending the life of the DDA, should the DDA choose to propose that to the township.
Right, and, and I know we have to have the DDA as long as that we're paying the bonds, and then it's sort of a question about how we wanna do economic development and therefore, a lot of townships do it without a DDA.
I think I covered everything. Oh wait, I'm sorry, there was one other thing that, uh, just FYI, the DDA also um, made a request for a different um, investment of DDA funds, uh, so that's submitted to the treasurer. You look like you have a question.
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking through that. I just, I, I think, I think that, I think that makes sense. I don't know that we've ever had such a request from the DDA, so I'm just going through in my head, trying to think through, is our treasurer the treasurer of the DDA?
Well, um, I believe our treasurer, treasurer Palmer oversees DDA funds along with other funds that our township funds, and the request was this, was actually a suggestion from a board member, uh, Yapple, uh, Ryan Yapple, and so I would defer to him if, if people have, if people would like more information about the rationale for doing so. He identified a, a low-risk fund that
Sure.
um, yields a better return, and so that was the rationale for doing so, for making the request.
And what form will that request come?
I believe in the form of a letter from the DDA to
Okay, or even minutes, I mean, something.
Well, there will be minutes, but I think the letter will Well, there will be minutes, but I think the letter will probably precede the minutes. But in any case, I think that covers everything. Are there any other comments or reports in that case? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that the, one of the items on the consent agenda was related to the strategic planning session for the Township Board, our commissions, as well as our staff, and the public certainly is welcome to attend as well. But the location was moved to Touchstone Cohousing Common House at 560 Little Lake Drive. And I just wanted to bring that up in case someone didn't see it in the packet.
And there will still be Zoom accessibility?
Yes.
Good.
Sorry, didn't mean to skip over you.
Oh, not a problem.
Do, do you have other things that you would like to report?
No, I just thought I'd bring that to the attention of the public.
Yeah, thank you. And Joyce, what is your expectation and hope about? I know you want the board to participate and other, and obviously, you know, key staff. But in terms of, you've invited the committee chairs, and I think it's so important that they or someone else from the committees be involved. Have we gotten good response, or do we need to kind of encourage our committees to make sure that they show up?
Yeah, no, we, I believe we've had a fairly good response. We've sent out reminders, and we'll send out another reminder before the event.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, well, moving along on our agenda, that brings us to our public hearing. This is a public hearing, the proposed expenses for fire services. And I read a few lines from the public notice that was issued for this public hearing. And then invite the chief to come up and make a presentation, township manager to further introduce the public hearing. But the Township Board of Sia Township has declared its intention to provide fire protection through a special assessment and has designated the Special Assessment District against which the cost of fire protection is to be assessed as all lands within the boundaries of the township, except for lands and premises exempt from the collection of taxes under the General Property Tax Act, PA 206 of 1893. The purpose of considering the proposed expenses for fire protection to be spent from a special assessment collection to set millage rates for the Special Assessment District are based on, based on those expenses. The December 1, 2023 assessments shall be recognized as revenue in the fiscal year ending 2024. An owner or party in, in interest or his or her agent may appear in person at the hearing to comment or may file his or her comments by letter, and his or her personal appearance shall not be required. If there's anything further that needs to be said. I believe the presentation from the chief will lay out some of the details of what the substances and the rationale for the request against the 1.35 mil limit. And with that, we'll open the public hearing at 7:53.
Manager Parker, Board of Trustees, thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. This is the annual required public hearing, as required by Public Act 33, specifically regarding the Fire Service Special Assessment District. Voters adopted in 2019 a special assessment district with a levy of 1.35 mils on property. Due to the assessment questions on the ballot November 7th that failed, nothing other than the 1.35 will be considered this evening. And I just want to talk a little bit about what the 1.35 would provide for and what it doesn't provide for. And I do have a couple of slides at the end to talk a little bit about how we move forward into the future. So essentially, the 1.35 mils provides for staff, vehicle maintenance and repairs and operation of our Zee Road Fire Station. That includes, and three firefighters on duty 75% of the time. You see, this number does change from time to time. What I do is evaluate what the current year looks like. Several years ago, with our paid-on-call and part-time staff, we were able to staff four on duty more frequently with our, with our declining ranks of paid-on-call. We're down to staffing with three firefighters 75% of the time and four about 25% of the time. Gives us the ability to respond to one emergency at any given time. And when I say respond to emergency, that I don't mean adequately respond to an emergency, I say minimally. Probably 25 to 30% of our calls that we receive require more than a one-fire-engine response. Talk a little about our existing fire department staffing. We have one full-time fire chief, a full-time assistant chief fire marshal, one full-time admin assistant. We have nine full-time emergency response staff, that's our captains, lieutenants and firefighters. And we have three part-time or paid-on-call staff. They generally work part-time shifts right along with our full-time firefighters. What our 1.35 mil assessment does not provide for, it doesn't provide for an adequate response to 25 to 30% of our calls. Doesn't provide adequate office space. We're not funding replacement of vehicles or capital expenditures. We, we're not funding improvement of our response times. We don't have a ladder truck. And three quarters of the time, we don't have staffing to meet our, our two-in, two-out requirements. Adequate response, I'll talk just briefly about that. Should be a two or more engine response to any fire within the community. Car accidents, extrications. An extrication is when we have to use our jaws of life tools to disentangle someone from a motor vehicle and remove them. Fire alarms, or alarms of any type, often, I wouldn't say often, but occasionally a fire alarm sounds not due to malfunction, but because there's a fire in the building. We've been caught in a pinch where we responded with one engine and three people. And when the crews have pulled down the street, noticed a column of smoke coming from the building, puts us well behind the eight ball. Carbon monoxide incidents, this is also, this and gas leaks are related to the two-in, two-out requirement. If we determine that there's a hazardous condition inside the house, we have to have four people on scene before we can go in and figure out why, where leak is coming from and, and resolve the issue. Much like I mentioned earlier, when we responded to Ann Arbor Township, they took immediate measures to remove the victims. That was a rescue situation where two-in, twelve, twelve was not applied. They removed the victims from the premises, but then they had to wait for others to get on scene to actually find the problem isolated and ventilate the structure. And there's, I don't think we'll ever have enough staff to adequately respond to storm days. Our mutual aid partners are tapped out. We don't have the ability to call on them. We staff up for those incidents. But oftentimes, we still have very long response times, 30 to 60 minutes to get to some of our hazardous condition calls. We don't have adequate office space. Building currently has two offices, one for the fire chief, myself, and the admin assistant. Our assistant chief and firefighters, we place desks in the dayroom so that they can do their reporting and their computer work. In fact, during an online meeting today, the assistant chief mentioned to me at the conclusion that it was very distracting having the guys have dinner or lunch while he was in a meeting. But we don't have the space to give him a private space to do that. Our captain has his desk in a dorm room, and that's used as his office space. And we don't have adequate training space to conduct larger trainings or multi-jurisdictional trainings. Replacement of vehicles and capital, NFPA standards, this is the industry standard throughout the country and oftentimes throughout the world, provide for a 15-year frontline service of a fire engine and a 10-year reserve status, and after 25 years should be decommissioned. Currently, we have no dollars saved for replacement of any of our fire upgrades. This picture on the slide is one of our lieutenants. We're conducting training using our water tanker. That vehicle today is 21 years old. It's still on frontline in Sia Township. It's a good running vehicle, however. A replacement vehicle, Dexter just spent $990,000. And they expect that vehicle to be delivered in 18 to 24 months. If we want to take ours out of service within NFPA specifications, we need to come up with a million dollars within the next two years, because it's going to take another two years to procure. We have not saved for replacement of our primary engine. It's halfway through its frontline service. I, I picked just a couple other pieces of equipment, breathing air packs. We have nothing saved for them. They're halfway through their lifecycle. They have finite lives and need to be replaced in another seven or eight years. I'd have to verify the exact date. And our jaws of life, our extrication equipment, 10 to 15 years, depending on the piece. And we have failed to save any money for their replacement either. Improvement of response times. We took a look at data for the first three quarters of this year. And if you look at the chart on the left, the township sections that are highlighted in green are where we respond to in six minutes or less. Areas in yellow, between six and 10 minutes, and areas in gray, we are over 10 minutes to respond to an emergency in those areas. And that's on average. I put a heat map next to that so that we can see areas of high frequency of calls and areas where we respond in between six and 10, or 10 or more minutes. Ladder truck, ladder truck is necessary for accessing the roofs of many of our one-story homes, most all of our two-story homes, and virtually everything that's commercial and/or apartment-style homes. It's the only way to apply water from above the incident. If, for example, we have a fire that's in an apartment on the second floor and it's not contained and spreads to the attic, we don't have an effective method to, to put water into that attic to put the fire out. And it's necessary to rescue or access, it's a necessary rescue access tool for any building that's two or more stories. We had an incident last week. One of the commercial buildings on Jackson had a fire alarm sound due to a sprinkler head activation. The, the company called in, said, yeah, we actually think we smell smoke in the building. So we upgraded the response to a commercial structure fire response, bringing in many of our neighbors. And our residencies ladder truck, we primarily rely on here in Sia, was not available, so it was out for maintenance. Our next closest ladder truck took 20 minutes to get here. We were able to clear the inside of the building of fire. However, we were not able to verify there was no fire on the roof of the building. I, I will say though, however, if we were there for 20 minutes, we would have discovered a fire on the roof of the building pretty quickly. I've just not been able to address it. And staffing to meet the two-in, two-out requirement. Roughly three quarters of the time, we, we don't have adequate staffing to enter a hazardous environment. That'd be a fire, CO, gas leak, some other hazardous conditions in the building. And how do we move forward? Do we need additional studies? Do we need to relook at the issue? I'd tell you probably not. 2015, our former fire chief in Carlisle Wortman commissioned and completed a study that told us we need a second fire station. 2018, the township spent about $40,000 to have Emergency Services Consulting International determine we need a second fire station. 2022, Fire Service Guidance Committee determined we need a second fire station. And it is also my professional opinion, we need a second fire station. So it's not, what do we need to do? It's how do we get it? We need a new plan. Very clearly, the residents rejected the proposals we've put before them. We need a plan that meets the needs of the community today. And we need a plan that is adaptable as the community grows. And we need a plan that the voters can and will support. Clearly, what we did last time was not that plan. That being said, Board, I'd be happy to answer any questions or any questions a residents may have during the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Why don't we turn to, allow time for people to speak during the public hearing? And then if there are questions at the conclusion or things that perhaps speakers raised during the public hearing, you can respond to that.
Absolutely. I'll just take a seat off to the side if that's acceptable.
What you see with having people come up during the hearing, I want to tell
I don't have any comments at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you are here for the public hearing, please come forward in turn. And then we'll allow time for those who are participating remotely, if they, if they choose to come in. During a public hearing, we allow up to five minutes for comment. Is there anyone here who would like to speak during the public hearing?
One of my
If you could, if you, I know you stated your name earlier. If you could state it again.
Oh, Judy Muck on Gallery Park Drive. One, during your earlier report, Chief, you had mentioned five or six key incidences. There were big incidences and important incidents. Not one was in Sia. And so, kind of says to me, are we really a big incident location? So that's one, because every incident was important, key, and if you were the victim, it was, it was important. But none were in Sia. My second is a question, when you say that you can't adequately respond, or you only can adequately respond to 20 to 25%, is that what?
Seventy, seventy-five.
Okay, that you can adequately respond to?
Yes.
So when you say a call, is that a call you're getting or a call from Sia? Because you respond, obviously, to our partners. So your percentages, are they based upon calls received or SIAO calls?
SIAO calls.
SIAO calls received. Okay, so at this point, you're able to respond to you're saying?
Seventy, seventy-five percent adequately.
Adequately. Okay. And then my
I apologize, that's with adequate resources.
Yes, yeah. So if you go with a second, because I saw there are three different places that recommended a second one, doesn't it just simply exacerbate your staffing situation? Because if we're short with one station and you need additional resources for this two and two, and we add another station, you're just exacerbating our staffing issue and the money that's needed. So why don't we focus on staffing one station adequately, building it onto this one, augmenting this, and work on that? Because when you're asking residents for a three to four millage increase, that is significant. So in my opinion, studies say, I, I mean, I believe the studies that we need more resources to serve the community. But three to four is a big ask. And maybe focus on augmenting this building and this staffing and try to use more of this building, maybe, or some Washtenaw County facilities that are just next door when it comes to training and the other things that are needed. I just think that we got some partnerships that can be used without going for the three to four mils. And you might be more likely to get agreement and the outcome that we all would want. Thank you.
You want to wait and respond to all of the comments at the same time?
Your preference, Board.
Okay.
Pam Boyd, a Sia resident. If you had been to all the meetings last year, a lot of your questions and your understanding weren't answered, and you would have had a really good education.
Yeah, sorry. Could you direct your comments to the Board? I, I, I understand you're trying to respond, but if you could.
So I blame the current Board and previous Boards for not educating residents, for not having it high enough on your priority list or the previous Board's priority list to help our fire station be on point with things that they needed. The, most residents have no idea, like this nice woman here, of 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 what the 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 situation has been. And I blame that on the township not getting out the word over time. Most people want to live their life. They want to come home and they don't want to have to worry about anything other than, you know, does Johnny have his SpaghettiOs for dinner or, you know, does Julie get to go to ballet class tonight? And so, um, the the, there has to be more information about the challenges that our fire department is facing and has been facing. And and you it's gonna, you can't overwhelm them. But um knowing how many deaths and I've been keeping track, we've had a lot of deaths this year. But you're penalizing the fire crew and you're penalizing those people who will not live because there isn't um enough ambulance service, whatever. So I I I put the blame on you guys. You have to figure out how to get the word out to all residents. And it's not a one-time. And um and you need to do it often. Thank you.
It's nice to speak during a public hearing.
Good evening, I'm Scott Shaken, uh Robin Wooddrive. I've been before you before uh regarding this uh the fire service. Um, and we haven't talked about emergency services that much tonight. We haven't talked about greater safety issues as well, sheriff issues. I won't address any of any of that. I'd like to camp on her remorse. Which, oh, oh, if I'm. Um, I I think it's an education process. Um, I I agree. I I think the onus is on you as a group. The prior boards, the prior in attention to the the growth challenges. Uh, we were happy to let the town grow, but we never ever addressed the safety issues along with it. You might recall, I helped start the fire department. I am saddened to see that we have gone almost backwards where we've had twenty-plus people, yes, all volunteer, yes, there's pluses and minuses regarding that. EMS wasn't an issue back then. I'm saddened to hear about our relationship uh with our current provider or the the lack of uh uh an authority assigned to discuss with them. Uh, the services, there's apparently no contractual arrangement with us in HVA. Okay, as likewise with the sheriff's department. So I'm a little confused about sort of the procurement of of these services. Uh, we haven't talked about that uh tonight. As far as raising awareness, I know in the greater plan, there's the fire protection uh and education uh that Assistant Chief wants to go through. Um, uh, we, I'm a little confused about our response so far to the uh uh vote last week and in the uh uh shutting down of the two proposals. You might recall, I was not a supporter of them. And for this very reason, I think that this is less a referendum and a statement on chief food and staff than it is on the board and the board's activities historically in this. Um, Mr. Patterson, I think on on the, I agree with him that we camp on some of his comments uh as well. I think the it it's mind-boggling that we are still at three levels uh uh full-time, available, uh seventy-five percent. This is inexcusable. I I think what we have failed to do is put together the benefit side of why we needed to keep up with the growth. The benefit, the ISO, we haven't discussed ISO. The commercial card or hydrant has got a, an ISO rating that is shameful, five. That should be an lower tier number in a hydrated space. If you go to the non-hydrated areas um to uh on the heat map, those zones that stick out particularly in the north and the northeast corridor, which is where I am. We enjoy the worst rating that is possible. It's called ten, ten plus. And I have gone through with my hazard insurance uh 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 insurer and went through the details of that. And the ISO rating is not, and that we we've discussed this, I've worked with with chief uh several times on on some of these uh uh measurements. The ISO uh rating would be a great way to talk about benefit because for me, if we were able to get response apparatus, people and water within a a certain amount of time uh though uh demonstrated that I we could enjoy in those non-hydrated areas an ISO rating that would be in the three to five bracket, as they call it. And that would represent a thirty percent reduction in my hazardous insu- my hazard insurance. And I think that would be similar for others. Now, all, not all insurers do the calculation the same way. Some pay a lot more attention to it. Unfortunately for me, mine does. And it's not just a matter of how far am I from the firehouse. Uh, so I uh I I think we got to react quickly. Um, again, I'm a little surprised at our reaction at this point of what what your uh the the board of trustees, the uh township manager uh basically has to say about what has happened with the uh shooting down of the two proposals. But we could not have, I cannot have imagined that we had not thought that there was a likelihood this was not gonna fly. What what's our response? Open question. I have volunteered to help. Nobody outside of the chief has stepped forward uh and said, gee, why don't you come and work with us on this committee? Or that committee.
Thank you, Scott.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during the public hearing? In that case, why don't we turn to those who are participating remotely?
I think you have someone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't come prepared to speak, but um I'd kind of like to ask a question. Um. I've lived in the county a long time, but there are lots of issues in the county that I'm really not familiar with. Um, and um I guess one of the things I want to understand better is I've heard you say that um like there are issues where you have like EMTs. But some of the fire fighters will be empty work. And I'm, I guess what I'm wondering is, is there anybody in this uh township or county or whatever that takes the the basic responsibility, somebody has a heart attack? Are you responsible or is someone else responsible? I guess I don't understand that. And I know that they're they're planning to build a a large retirement center really close to where I live. And my concern is um, how are we taking care of the issue of, say, ambulances? How are we taking care of the issue of somebody getting that that those people to the hospital where they need to get there? And it's like, I hear you saying, and I, and it makes sense to me that this, that the sooner you get to the fire, the better. And your goal is like, what, six minutes? And I'm, and I'm wondering, is there an ambulance at the fire station? Or anyplace else in this, in Sia Township? Is there an ambulance where somebody is responsible that if somebody in the township calls and says my, my mother's having a heart attack? Uh, is there somebody that's gonna get that heart attack victim to the hospital in six minutes? Or are we are we pushing so hard on one issue that we're not paying attention to the other issue? And that, and that's one of the things I'm concerned about because I could have this big retirement thing being built really close to my house. And I'm just thinking we need, we need ambulances to be available for those people. You know.
May I ask your name?
I'm sorry, my name is Agnes Pastorino, and I lived in Sia Township a long time. Since nineteen sixty-eight, actually. But um but like, but there are lots of things I don't know about the different issues in the township. And this was one of the issues I really didn't have any.
I've got your questions down, and after we get through everyone's questions, I'll be sure to answer.
Very good. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during the public hearing before we turn to those who have participated?
You answered that question now. This board did not say hold all your questions. You asked.
The board's pleasure.
Why don't you go ahead and answer it?
Yeah, go go through the issues we've heard already, just so we don't.
Yeah, me too. Um, our first speaker, Ms., I apologize, Ms. Monk. Got it. Um, uh, first, uh, none of the significant incidents I mentioned in Sia were in Sia.
Uh, I, I just, for everyone, you don't have to respond to each of them of mine.
I I think.
Because I was just sharing um uh comments.
Yeah, no, I I think it's an important point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because it it it's about getting a different outcome next time is where my comments were coming from.
Gotcha. Yes, so so what I what I can say to that is uh over the course of the first two quarters, we've had many building fires here in Sia. Uh, but either A, we've been close, I'm able to extinguish them quickly, or B, it was a contained fire that that uh didn't require a lot of resources or cause significant damage. Um, I was just trying to highlight some of the more catastrophic instances or incidents that we see. Uh, fortunately, none that, no very majorly catastrophic ones occurred in the in the community. Uh, and I had a question about a second station and personnel issues. Um, and and how wouldn't that just exacerbate the personnel issues? Part part of the proposal uh to uh build a a second station was to add additional staffing to both stations so that each station could function independently uh for for more minor incidences or the seventy percent, but would function together for the the twenty-five to thirty percent where it was needed. So we would have been adding staffing as well. Um, Mrs. Pastorino's questions, um. All of our firefighters are EMTs as well. Uh, all of our primary response vehicles are licensed to respond to medical emergencies. Uh, the the capability we lack in the fire department is the ability to transport patients to a hospital. We rely on a third-party provider here on Valley Ambulance to do that. And and it might help, uh, if I just walk through a typical nine-one-one call, it should be pretty brief, but uh resident X is the, his or her mother is having a heart attack and calls nine-one-one. Uh, that call initially goes directly next door. That's where our county's nine-one-one system is. Uh, they recognize that it's a fire or EMS emergency and immediately transfer it uh to emergent health partners where our services are dispatched from. Uh, they begin asking that person questions and categorize the call. And they say, hey, we think this is a heart attack. Um, and in part of that process, there's key questions that say, hey, this is a high priority call. I need to stop asking questions and send resources. Minor calls, they'll get much deeper into the questions before they send the resource. But back to that heart attack call, they recognize pretty quickly that it's a high acuity call, um and we have built into our response plan a combined response with Huron Valley Ambulance, the ambulance provider. So as soon as the call is categorized, a fire dispatcher gets it and sends us on it while an ambulance dispatcher sends an ambulance on the same call. The ambulances are trained to the paramedic level, uh which can do twelve lead EKGs, they can administer medications, start IVs, a lot of things we can do. We're trained to the basic life support level. We can defibrillate patients, give some medications uh for, say, for example. Uh, we could give Narcan for an overdose, or we can treat allergic reactions and we can place some airways. Uh, we both respond together to the incident. Um, and oftentimes we arrive first, can begin immediate lifesaving measures while the ambulance waits to get a, we wait for the ambulance to get on scene. Um, and I agree completely that there is going to be a an increased need for service when we have a senior retirement complex uh go in within the community. Absolutely. Last comment I'll make was part of our uh initial plan that we put to voters was for the fire department to begin transporting some patients at the basic life support level. Uh, that would say, for example, we have a um person fell off a bicycle and they dislocated their elbow. We would be able to splint their elbow. We could transport them to the hospital and let Huron Valley Ambulance, the paramedic ambulance, go back in service uh to be able to respond to the heart attack call.
But where does the Huron Valley ambulance have to come from? How long is it gonna take for that ambulance to get into Sia Township to the heart attack victim and get them to the hospital?
I I will say.
How long is that gonna take?
I will say sometimes there's an ambulance sitting behind this building. Uh, sometimes there's not an ambulance in the community.
They're frequently at my.
But but there is not an.
That's one of their posting places.
There is not an ambulance at the fire station. And somebody able to drive that ambulance to go from the fire station to where the person.
We do not have a licensed ambulance to transport people at the fire station.
Because that would be another issue that I would think would be important to a township.
Would have been funded through the ballot.
But I don't know if it comes out of a different portion of the budget or what, but.
It would have been.
It should be, it should be funded.
Funded by the fire department.
It should be funded that even today, even before there's a retirement center there. If somebody has a heart attack, we want to try to get that heart attack victim to the hospital as fast as we get the fire turned to the fire. That's what.
I agree completely. Um. Huron Valley Ambulance is a private company. Sia Township does not have a contract with them to provide service.
But it's an issue we should consider.
I agree completely. Um, there are there are instances where I've I hear uh them getting dispatched, our firefighters get dispatched, and they don't have an ambulance available. Uh, that's to a medical call. I hear sometimes they say, hey, your your transport is twenty minutes out. And sometimes the ambulance beats us to the same.
And I guess, I I I guess along the same vein, um if there were a person, let's say if there were an ambulance and and somebody who can drive that ambulance to go do that kind of thing, uh, that would be something we need in addition to whatever we need for the fire department. And I, I think we should really seriously think about that.
Thank you. I'm right there with you. Absolutely.
Kathleen Brana, Sia resident. Um, been a lot of discussion about communications here. In the very first public meeting for this topic, I mentioned this, that this board made a fatal flaw, that you took all the input, didn't answer a bloody thing, and all the people left, and they never got their answers. You were just about to do it again because one person, which I think is the same person that made that procedure in the first public hearing, says, why don't we wait? And that is the supervisor. You guys didn't agree to do that. He just said, should we, chief asked, he didn't get an answer. He did what he thought he you wanted, but that's only one person that wanted that procedure. Why do you keep not answering the public's questions about this issue? I think it's much better that you have this interaction where this uh Passerino got her, some of her feedback answered. One other thing she left, um, one other thing that she probably is not aware of is the new Heritage Woods. Over two hundred residents with the senior center. Four of the seven trustees here voted to do that with minimal contributions to the fire fu- fires services, minimal contributions. When we knew and the chief has told you that that will. that, that will increase his service level, I think to something to the effect of one call per day. And four of the seven voted to just approve that without any consideration for fire. It's about public benefits. Please evaluate those. It's about communication. Don't allow people to ask a question and don't answer it. It's like you're sabotaging. Give people the answers they asked for at the time they asked for them. Thank you.
Anyone else present who would like to speak during the public hearing?
David Reed, Syle Township. I just have a comment regarding the whole process leading up to the election. We tried to do an education process. We tried to educate the people about, um, what the two ballot measures would do. Um, but a comment tonight demonstrates to me that we did a really poor job. Even though on the capital question, it says if this, if both ballot measures don't pass, the capital question, even if it passes, would not be implemented. So that a comment was made, why are we building another building if we don't have the manpower to staff it? Well, we wouldn't build a building unless the, um, first pro- proposal had passed. So it's obvious to me that we did a very poor job of educating our people about the, what was, what this, these two ballot measures, how they would work hand in hand. So I'm not sure if the ballot measures weren't worded properly or the education process. I mean, I attended, I think we had three or four informational sessions, and I think I can count on one hand, maybe two hands, a number of people that showed up. So there was obviously either no interest in it or people had already made up their mind. I'm not really sure what it is, but I think it's incumbent on this board because this board is responsible for the fire department. The, the fire department is part of this community. And I think it's incumbent on this board to figure out a way to get that type of information out to folks so they don't have this type of misunderstanding about how these two ballot proposals would work. Now, I'm not sure we need two ballot proposals, um, but that, that's not, that's above my pay grade. Um, but I, I think, uh, the two ballot proposals makes it very complex. Um, I understand why it's that way, but it makes it complex. And, and I think the more complex something is, the less people are inclined to delve in and, and dig in and understand it, and therefore they'll vote no. So, um, I think we have to figure out a way to get the capital funded and the operations funded. Um, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure if two ballot proposals are the way to go or what. Um, but I think it's odd. I think it's very telling that four members of this board voted for the one point three five millage. I think, you know, I think you voted no, right? Jessica?
For which question?
The fire, the fire, the previous millage, the one point three five in twenty eighteen, or twenty twenty, sorry.
Yeah, that, in twenty nineteen, the one point three five, putting it on the ballot, that was just as I was coming in.
Right.
That decision had been made.
Uh, that, okay. So three members of this board voted for that. To my chagrin, I was one of them. Um, but interestingly enough, the original amount that was requested, I believe, was one point nine. And interestingly enough, that's exactly what this chief was going to ask you to implement had those two proposals passed. This is five years later. And I just, you know, people just don't understand, uh, you know, equipment. One piece of fire engine costs a million dol- one fire, um, apparatus costs a million dollars. Then, and so, I don't know, I, I think we need to do a better job.
David, thank you for all your work on the issue, the chair of the Fire Service Guidance Committee.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during the public hearing? Okay, let's move on to those who are participating remotely.
Thank you, Will. Uh, first up is Jonathan Greenberg, followed by Rob Pattinson. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Hi, and good evening. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank Chief Hood for the excellent presentation this evening. A little bit scary when you consider the lack of protection that we have and the lack of protection that his staff has, uh, to ensure our safety. I don't have a lot to comment because David Reed just stole a lot of what I was going to say. For me, the most, I think, telling and, um, whatever, the most, um, um, sharp contrast, uh, or oh, it's been a long day. I do apologize for my lack of words here. Um, now, so the biggest contrast in my mind was that five years ago, uh, one point nine million was requested. And one point three five was, uh, somehow arrived on as the right amount. And that was five years ago. Uh, it, it, it just doesn't make sense that we are not funding our lifesaving. I mean, it's like, what, what does the board do? There's, you're supposed to take care of checks. You're supposed to cash and make sure the things get done and pay people like the police and the fire people. That's, that's the, the lesson I grew up with as a kid. Um, but at any rate, I really hope you guys can fund, uh, the fire department at an appropriate rate so they can start saving for equipment that they most desperately need at the very, very least. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Next up is Rob Pattinson, followed by Ryan Yapple. Go ahead, Rob.
Rob Patt, Syle Township resident. What a devastating presentation. Um, I hope it really sunk in with this board. How devastating that presentation, that the, the, the loss of our fire SAD proposal uh, could not, um, come at a worse time. And many people have, uh, been too proper and gentlemanly to say it, but I will say it. Congratulations needs to be given to the tax sanity, uh, group made up of Jack Knowles, former supervisor Jack Knowles, former trustee Erwin Martin, and John Boyle, a local businessman. Jack Knowle knew that one point nine mils was requested and required by, uh, the evaluation of professionals outside of Syle Township who made the recommendation to Syle Township, who knew what they were talking about. He decided to gut that SAD in twenty nineteen and gut it down to one point three five. That's Jack Knowle's responsibility and Erwin Martin helped him. Then John Boyle recently, um, put up a whole bunch of numbers and had a very, um, uh, effective presentation to the board. He is a, a very, um, capable presenter. And he, at the time, he was informed that some of his math was wrong and some of his numbers was, were wrong. And then a month later, he came back to another meeting and repeated those numbers. So that showed me that he was more interested in his agenda item than he was in the truth. So those are the three gentlemen who had a six thousand dollar, um, uh, no campaign that was extremely effective. And I have the perfect example of how effective it was. I have very good friends who I've talked about, who live in Syle Township, who I have talked about the fire SAD um, proposal and explained everything about it to them, but they got the mailing in the, in the, uh, in their mail about how it was going to cost everybody eleven thousand dollars, and that totally freaked them out. Uh, and they asked me about it and I explained that, quite frankly, that was a lie. And then they went to the, to the poll and they got in and they were voting. And they saw the, the language of the ballot and they did the math in the, in the polling station. And they realized it, it could cost them eight hundred dollars a year and they panicked. And even with all of the information that I had given them and that they had, they panicked because of the fear campaign of the no, uh, the no vote campaign that, and they voted no. And so that that's just a one example of how effective that campaign was. And David Reed, the Fire Services Guidance Committee was an extremely capable group of very sharp people with very different views, uh, who had extremely good, um, discussions and evaluations of what the options were, came up with a very good plan. The, the guidance committee made one miscalculation. They knew it was going to be a tough sell with the two proposals and they knew that it was going to take education. What they did not plan on, and none of it, none of us watching ever thought would be the issue, is they would have to contend with lies to over, they would have to overcome lies. And, and that is a very unfortunate part of this whole process that our fire SAD proposals have failed because of a, a very effective misinformation campaign that nobody foresaw. Knowing the characters involved, perhaps we should have, and in hindsight, obviously, we shouldn't. But this is a devastating presentation showing that, um, Syle Township is in real trouble in terms of being able to take care of its residents and being able to take care of its firefighters. The very first thing that needs to happen is that, please let me finish. The very first thing that needs to happen is that this township needs to hire three firefighters so that when we dispatch our firefighters, they can do so safely. That is the bare minimum of what needs to happen. And we also need to find a way to raise money to replace equipment that is on its last legs and uh, and, and find new equipment so we can keep our residents safe. Thank you for the extra time.
Thank you, Rob. And next up is Ryan Yapple. Go ahead, Ryan.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Sorry I wasn't able to be there this evening. Uh, ju- just one point. My last name is Yapple, sorry. Supervisor Hathaway, Chris, yes, you guys did know that. Uh, not a big deal, but everybody.
You know your name.
One thing I wanted to share that was interesting, uh, in the community, I was actually returning, uh, camp at Meyer this last Saturday and the fire department, uh, came to purchase groceries. And we were waiting in line to do so, and one of the residents of this community was surprised that I knew the names of the firefighters because there's only so many of them and she didn't know much of the information that Chief Hood was able to share with us in this presentation this evening. Um, it was rather enlightening. Um, I've actually had that conversation three times in the last four days with different people I've met at businesses here in Syle. Um, I really would encourage the board to take action on this. Um, I think we have to go back to what David said. We have to have something that's much simpler. Uh, we have to have something where we can sell it, basically sell it to somebody in fifteen to thirty seconds. Um, I don't know exactly what that should be yet. Uh, I would, I would lean on the board and on Chief Hood and I'm happy to help again the other Fire Services Guidance Committee to come up with a, a plan to have something that will support the fire department, but also be easier to explain to the voters because I, I think exactly what Rob said, it's a little confusing. Um, just because we threw so much at people, sometimes it overwhelmed people or they just didn't want to know or they had made up their mind. Um, really would encourage the board to take action on this sooner rather than later. It, as Chief Hood said, we've been studying this for seven to eight years now, and the longer we take to take action, the longer it's going to change to get results. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Brian. Anyone else that wants to speak at the public, I'm a public hearing? Raise your hand. See, no other hands raised.
Before we get into discussion, let's close the public, public hearing at eight forty-five. And, um, and Chief, if you would like to respond to any of the further comments or questions or, um, open it up to questions from the board, um, how would you like to proceed?
Um, at the board's, uh, at the board's leisure, whoever determines.
We'll go around. Let's take hearing. All right.
Nothing. Thanks for the presentation and your work on the, on the management.
Oh, all right.
So, uh, as you guys, I think, know, I used to own a marketing company. So I, I, I gotta agree a hundred percent. There was no marketing plan. I mean, that's why we failed. There was zero marketing plan. We didn't have a communication plan. We didn't articulate it. We didn't make things simple. We didn't say what's good for them. So the big thing is you say, when I'm, you're going to give me money, what do I get back? What's my ROI for that? You had contenders that created a fun campaign, a fear, uncertainty and doubt campaign. So alls I did know for sure, I was going to spend ten grand, whether it's ten grand or nine grand or five grand with this, but there was no, what am I getting for that money? We didn't make anything consumable, right? Simple little diagrams that were simple, simple even the, 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 the actual, um, language that was utilized for the actual millage itself was somewhat confusing. I had to read it twice myself to understand it. I was at all the meetings. So I'm just imagining a user went, what a user, a consumer at Syle. If, if by default, and I think it would have failed either way, without fun campaign, frankly, I think, I think it was against us. It was, it failed two to one and we still, I think we still would have failed, you know, less than that, maybe. Um, is to really s- stand back. If we're going to take another swing at this, let's create an actual marketing, wholesome, irresponsible company. Marketing, I'll take on the responsibility, I guess, you guys know me, I like to do a project. Uh, to do that, come up with a very articulate campaign. We've got all the data. Mr. Reed has data. Chief Hood has it. We have all, all the information available to us. We just have to put it in boxes in a very consumable way and we can't just expect to send one or two things out and expect to be all ducky. This has to be an ongoing, you know, the average person has to be communicated fifteen times, fifteen times where they go, oh, so what you're saying is fire bad, fire department good. Yes, that's what we're saying. And here's why. We didn't do any of that and, and you're right, that does fall under responsibility. We own that. So, um, uh, I, I, my opinion is going forward strongly is let's I'm happy to help, you know, form, you know, like, you guys know, I'm so big on commitment. I like to hold somebody responsible. You can hold me responsible. That's fine to create an active conscious plan that has input from everyone, buy-in from all, all the stakeholders. And either, I don't know if that's, and I'm going to leave that up to Jess and, and you, you, uh, to tell me the supervisor is, is the best way that we raise internal funds as we go out and try to fund again. I don't know what the best mechanisms for those are. I'll lean on you guys to tell us what, what options we have.
It's a, the yes campaign. It's a campaign outside of the township.
Okay, so, so, if it's a self campaign, that's what we should, we should do, you know, create a SWAT strategy of strength. We can stop opportunities and threats, right?
You just have to be cautious about spending taxpayer money to advocate, right? Because there is law that says that.
I, I understand that.
This would be totally outside the township.
And it can't go out in a, in a township newsletter or you can't advocate. You can educate. Which was missing, I would say, was missing as much education as was needed, but you can't advocate position.
So, so we, we could have done a lot more in our website that we talked about, right? We could have taken a lot more FAQ and a lot more that was present. There was some stuff there, but we could have done a much better job. We could have raised our own external campaign and said, hey, would you, I would have thrown five hundred bucks or whatever to campaign to promote it on, on a personal level. We could have done, raised our own say yes campaign.
But, Mark, you, this is all great and I agree. The board is responsible and we all approve this.
I, I understand. I'm, I'm.
Yeah, and but.
We all own it. We're, I'm, I'm as, I'm as equal to blame as the rest of us.
Yeah.
Which is going forward. How, how do you want to fix it?
Right, well, there's a lot to it and tonight is the public. Right, well, there's a lot to it and tonight is the public hearing about the one point three five that, that's what that's about.
I understand, but the one point five three five doesn't remediate the challenges that we have.
Exactly.
Chief Hood correctly. So what are we going to do post the one point three five L H T? Either increase minimally to one point nine or whatever the, the incremental improvements are that, that, that the, that the residents will buy into. And the point is, I'm saying is to just repeat what we've done would be a mistake. It was, it was a failure, abysmal failure. What can we do? And again, I own it as much as I own one seventh of it. How do, how do we fix that going forward? These are just my suggestions on, 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 on why I think we have the, the out, out, the result that we had. Again, there was nothing that was clear. What's in it for me? Uh, I think also the challenge, you have just the market sentiment right now, right? You got high interest rates, you got inflation. I mean, you kind of have the market working against you too. So the time just couldn't have probably been worse, frankly. That didn't help. And again, our communication vehicles, we didn't just, we dismissed it on so many levels. Uh, one-on-one levels of, of quote unquote, selling something to the, to the, to, to, to satisfy residents. So they clearly understood what the benefits, benefits were. So, um, I'm just gonna say that us as the board, we got to just full stop, rethink it, tear it apart. Start from scratch, not, not repeat. That's all I guess where I'm coming from. And if you need somebody to help drive that, I'll, I'll throw my hand, you know, hand up to say, all right, I'll, I'll be the guy. If somebody else wants to do it, that's okay too. My, my feelings won't be hurt.
Trustee Carey, did you have a comment?
Yes, um, well, regarding this whole process, there was a. And you're correct, Judy, Judy. Yes, we cannot use taxpayer funds to promote or negate ballot questions. We can't do that. That has to come from an outside source if they want to do that. We had a committee. The committee was great. I watched a lot of those, those, um, meetings. Um, and they did all the data, but the marketing piece, they did not have. That, you know, and I see really smart people, but if you don't have the sales to promote, then it's going to fail. Okay. I've talked, as you know, I talked with a lot of residents, um, and the two issues that I heard were. Oh, you're going to collect four point five zero that's going to raise. Even though the language clearly set up to, but it was a complicated situation over time. In fact, the biggest issue is, the second response I would hear is, I don't trust the board. You have a history of not getting along, not doing what's right. You pu- you focus on things that are important when things that are important fall to the side. So I say to them, there's a new board and we are doing much better than the past boards. But I understand it's our job to rebuild trust and we are doing that. And have to give Joyce, our manager, a lot of credit for helping us with that. So I agree, we need to start again. I feel terrible for our firefighters. It, they put their lives on the line and it's our failure that we haven't been able to support them in the way that they should be supported. And this isn't just now. This is going back decades. We have all these great ideas, parks and pathways, but we don't know how to maintain. We have a growing community with many developments going in, but we haven't focused on fire and water infrastructure and roads. The three main basics that we're supposed to be providing to our residents. So yes, I agree, it falls back on us and hopefully we've learned from this. And our firefighters in our department can hang in there until we fix this.
Sure. Um, so later in the agenda, I support your request for the one point three five assessment. I'll also note that, um, the notice and proposal for tonight would recognize the revenue normally as we haven't in the past. So that will help a bit with the fund balance, which in the chief's presentation, you had a slide, you know, zero dollars saved for replacement vehicle. Zero dollars saved for this or that. For the board, I want to remind you that that's the fund balance, right? That's the fund balance that, that we try to save up in our fire fund that has been so low the last several years. I'm very disappointed, um, and not totally surprised. I respect the will of the voters on the questions. I feel very strongly, these questions should go to voters. Um, and I just want to share, I remain committed to not making an assessment on fire or roads. Or anything at the board table without a vote of voters. It's an option for this board, but I believe very strongly it should go to voters. Um, I'm committed, um, to, um, you know, we need to regroup, kind of get some information, talk to voters. Maybe continue some of the need achieved, um, just kind of continuous, because what we've started is some education. It's been insufficient, but I think we should recognize that we've started the conversation. We have to go back out to voters, I believe, in order to provide the basic level of public safety services that our residents expect of us. Um, I think we need to go back out in twenty twenty-four. Um, and we need to figure out what that looks like. This is not something that we can let the next board handle. I also want to say that, um, after Tuesday, I no longer support, um, putting on the ballot anything about roads. Um, I think that that's optional. I think, um, you know, we need to prioritize what's most important. Um, we have a bus renewal coming up. Maintaining essential bus service is a priority for me. As is getting the fire services, fire and EMS services to where they need to be. So I've got a lot of ideas about how we can look at the ballot question differently. You know, we can, we can ask for, you know, it's always going to be the same amount of money that we need or more. Okay, we can ask for a shorter period of time on some. But as an example, with the capital financing, just as a reminder about why that capital question was there for twenty years at point seven five. Had it passed on Tuesday, tonight, we would be considering a resolution to bond for not more than sixteen point five million dollars. In order to finance the station and the ladder truck. Now, that twenty-year promise from voters is what makes it possible for the township to bond. At a very competitive rate in order to finance those capital improvements. When a term is less, you know, five years, four years, it's not possible to, to finance something like a building. So, um, I definitely agree, um, there's ways we can ask the question differently. I just want voters to know, um, it's not going to be less money. It's not going to cost less to provide the level of service that we need. We can take things in some phases and different steps. We can make it multiple asks of voters instead of just one for the next ten years. We can go back out every four years, but it's never going to be cost less than it does today. In order to take the big gulp and bring our fire and emergency services to where it needs to be. Um, so I'm committed to the, the research, the education. Um, and I appreciate that we have P M Gap here, who's been very helpful through this process to sort of look at the long-term capital needs. Um, and I know that we'll be meeting internally to start looking at how we could ask the question. But I just want to say, from my point of view, it's imperative that we get back out there and ask the question again, that we do it in twenty twenty-four. And that for me, it's, um, a top priority along with the bus renewal.
Maybe we need.
Trustee Reiser, do you have anything that you would like to?
No, I'm.
I'm, I'm too, will be when we get to the, that point on the agenda, excuse me, supporting the request for the one point three five. Uh, in assessment to support the fire department. Um, I shared the disappointment of those who hoped, uh, for a positive outcome with the, uh, the two ballot questions. I think there is a lot, um, to absorb from the loss and the, um, size, I guess, of the no vote. Um, I think, um, the, the reflexes, you know, uh, to, you know, sort of. Find some ex, uh, someone to blame, I guess, or, or some, um. Pause for that outcome, but I think it does boil down to, um, a very sizable ask. Uh, historic size of a millage request for Syo Township. And I think, um, we, those of us who voted to place it on the ballot were focused on the need. And we weren't thinking through, um, how that, the size of that millage, the amount of that ask. Was going to resound, uh, with residents. And I think, uh, this was a lesson, uh, for us, all of us, I hope. Um, and I think, um, it would, um, be wise of us to step back and process. Uh, what we've learned from this experience, um, and, and not rush forward with, um, you know, sort of asking basically the same question over again right away. I think, um, Chief, you know, in your presentation, you did a good job of laying out sort of what the costs are. What we'll be able to do with the one point three five funding level, what we won't be able to do. Um, but I think, you know, we need to think, those of us who have the vote to place things on the ballot. Um, we need to think long and hard, uh, before we place another fire question back on the ballot right away. Um, we don't want to leave the fire department underfunded, but at the same time, we don't want to, um, make the same mistake twice. Um, so I think we want to get this right. I am committed, as you know, to trying to find revenue sources to help pay for the fire department and our emergency services. From other sources besides Syo Township voters, taxpayers. Um, but, um, you know, we're going to have to try everything. We're going to have to be creative. Um, in order to accomplish these goals that we've set for ourselves as a township. I don't think it's simply a matter of sort of turning around and asking the same question again. And I think we do have, as a board, we have a responsibility to weigh all of the different needs of the township. And, um, so while I think we all recognize that fire, uh, safety, emergency response is a vital. Core function of the township. It's not the only thing that we are responsible for. And we certainly don't want to undercut the other services of the township. In order to, to, you know, meet that core service. So I think, I, I hope that we will, you know, spend some time, think hard about this before we come back. I do support the one point three five assessment that we'll be voting on later this evening. Uh, with that, I would like to suggest that we move on so that we can get to those other important votes. But thank you very much, Chief, and, um. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have something that you wanted?
I was waiting until you were done and.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, please go ahead before we move on.
I, 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 I just want to, um, first of all, let the chief and, um, his staff. And the staff here at the township, uh, to know that, uh, the work that they've done is really appreciated. And certainly there are restrictions primarily because, um, staff and the township cannot, um, actually promote a millage. They can provide information, they can educate the public, but they cannot necessarily, uh, promote and advertise to try to get. Others to see that perspective. Uh, it was disappointing, but I do think it's important to step back and take a look at, uh, where, where did we go at this point in time? Uh, I think what's really critical is to recognize that you do need the support and the assistance of residents. In order to get this to work. And I just hope that we take the time to reach out to our residents to have that discussion and find out more clearly. What it might take to support the fire department, because I don't think doing nothing is an alternative.
You know, well, that's one. Two, two more things that I can be, you know, and don't, don't, I mean, it'd be harsh with you a little bit, but number one, there is responsibility here. It's us. You know, I, I felt like you were trying to water down the responsibility. It's the board. We, we failed. It was us, period. And I'm going to disagree that safety is kind of number one. I know there's other things in the board that we're responsible for, but I think safety is like. Number one, everything else is kind of distant second, right? I mean, if somebody's not safe, I guess I really don't care if the water's running, right? If I'm, if I'm burning up or something inside or whatever, or I'm having a heart attack, I really don't care about, you know, if my lawn's getting mowed or not. So, so I'm going to kind of take issue with those things that, that has to really be a priority. And that we just plain screwed this up. We did not nearly do the fraction of the education we need to have. It was evident by the, by the outcome. We own that and I own it too. I'm not just saying you. I, I do too. We as a board own that. And I don't want to water that down that, you know, gosh, we could have done better or gosh, it was, didn't work out the way it's, it's pretty serious. And it's something we gotta take to heart. And I don't, I don't know what that answers. We must work together as a team with all that, the data point that we have. And come with, with a more marketable solution that, like I said, where the residents see our Y. What's my return on my investment? I give you this money. What am I getting back? I, that clear, clearly didn't, didn't happen. They just saw this money going out and obviously no return for that, or they would have probably voted different.
And you know, we never have work sessions and all of this, I mean, if we're talking about being a team and working together, we need to have work sessions. We can't do this stuff, what you're talking about, you know, um.
That would be a work session.
Yeah, absolutely. And we haven't had one. I keep saying, we need to have work sessions and it just, thank goodness, we're having a strategic planning session. But that isn't with the board. I mean, the board will be included, but that's where the, the work behind the scenes. This stuff we come and vote on in a meeting, but we need to have work sessions in order to do the work before we get here to vote.
Thank you. We'll be moving on now to item K one. This is, um, new business, possible action adoption, mid-year amendments to the F Y E twenty-four budget. I'll call on the clerk. This is the kind of item that she prepared.
Um, sure. Actually, I think we have Ally Norris and Melanie Crowther from P M Gap Fund. If they could join on Zoom, please. This is, uh, something I think Ally and Melanie are gonna give a brief intro to. They worked hard on it. Um, Joyce and I and others have reviewed it, their regular budget amendments for the six-month mark. Um, along with a couple of attachments. There you are. Hi, Ally and Melanie.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. So, hi, everyone. So for those of you who don't know me, my name is Ally Norris. Um, I'm a consultant with Plant Marianne and Melanie Crowthers on the call as well. She's a senior manager. So we were hired back in September as the interim finance director. And one of the first things we reviewed was the budget for any possible amendments. So generally, the best practice is to review the budget for amendments, um, at the end of each quarter. So we use the cutoff date of September thirtieth for our point in time for review. Um, as part of this procedure, we ran a budget to actual report again as of September thirtieth. And reviewed for any revenue or expenditures that were currently over budget or tracking to be over budget. We then reviewed these with the township, specifically Jessica and Joyce, um, to help identify any additional amendments that may be required. Um, then with the help of the township, we came up with the proposed amendments that you have in front of you today. Um, again, this is just a point in time and moving forward, we'll plan to review the budget to actual numbers at the end of each quarter. So we'll have another review after December thirty-first and then again, right before the township's fiscal year end in March. And we'll propose any amendments if needed. And that's all I have.
Yeah, to make sure that you're in compliance with the Budget Act, we will definitely be doing at least one more amendment, possibly two, as Ally mentioned.
Um, I don't think so. I, you know, as mentioned, um, by Ally, this is, uh, the first budget amendment. So we'll be evaluating the budget and, um, certainly we know we'll have at least one more, potentially two. Just to make sure that, uh, the projections are in place and we end the year, uh, without, uh, any issue with any of the departments.
And I had one proposed, um, change to the attachment, um, attachment B, the authorized positions. I wanted to offer up one change before we consider action. Under one oh one dash two seventy, human resources, um, we have the human resources generalist budgeted for point five. I'd like to change that to point seven five and note in the currently filled by column that it would be budgeted for thirty hours a week. One oh one, two seventy, human resources, um, we've long had vacant, uh, position. We hope to fill tonight. I'd like to change that authorized level from point five to point seven five, budgeted for thirty hours a week. from .5 to .75, budgeted for 30 hours a week. And that's a proposed amendment to attachment B here.
So with that amendment to attachment B is, unless there's further discussion, someone prepared to move the model motion to adopt the resolution approving the F Y 2324 budget amendments with attachments A and B as amended?
I would so move.
Me by riser, I'm sorry. Support by Brzezo, please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes? Brzezo?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Resolution adopted five to zero.
Thanks, Ally and Melanie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item K2. This is annual action that the board must take in order to set the level to be assessed on the December 1st tax bill to raise monies for the fire special assessment. And so this would be a motion to adopt the resolution, attached resolution.
And in the attached resolution, the final, the, the finally resolved millage rate is set forth as follows, blank, I would propose 1.35.
And if that's a motion, I would support it, if not, I would move it.
I think it was, I would treat that as a motion by Flintoff, support by riser, please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes? Brzezo?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Resolution adopted five zero.
Thank you. Item K3. And this is approval of the regular meetings schedule. And this again was prepared by clerk Flintoff, so I will turn to you.
Sure, per our rules of order, we adopt our regular meeting dates. Our typical dates are the second and fourth Thursday, but our regular date, dates are whatever we adopt tonight for 2024. And so here proposed are the dates, thanks Christie for your work on this. You'll see here in blue our proposed regular meeting dates, reflected in yellow are township holidays, and reflected in green are election days. All meetings would continue to start at 7:00 P M here with remote participation, with the exception of a meeting proposed for November 20th, 2024, which would start at noon, which is when township officers turn over. And I am proposing a, a meeting there for that swearing-in special meeting. So you'll see here a couple of things. Generally, the flow is two, sometimes three meetings a month. And there's a couple extra ones I want to note for you. February 29th is a meeting proposed by manager Parker to have a budget work session. So that would be kind of an additional meeting to work on the budget. As well, March 5th, and we'll handle this in the next items, March 5th would be the day when we would set forth our budget hearing for the budget that we'll be working on for fiscal year end '25. All the others that don't fall exactly on a second or fourth is to accommodate elections or holidays. Are there, are there questions about this or any suggested changes?
Well, I have a question. The earlier draft I saw of this had no meeting the week of the 25th of March. Why is it now that we show three meetings in March? Except for the budget process?
The...
19 and 26, you're talking about?
Yeah, so the 19th would have been our regular meeting. Is that because of elections or?
No, I have to see where we landed on that. I think that, and, and we can go either way on this. I apologize, Joyce, because I know we went back and forth on this.
Yeah.
But, but we, we wanted to have the hearing on the 5th and, and hope to adopt it on the 19th.
So is the 26 optional?
I think the 26 might...
Put that on there as kind of an additional potential date.
Yeah. I, I, the concern that we had is, you know, you have the public hearing and you, you may have a number of questions that come up during the public hearing. And then initially, we had talked about adopting the budget on the 26. However, it doesn't give you a lot of time in the event that there is an issue related to the budget. So we built time in to make sure that we could actually have the public hearing, adopt the budget, without being at the very end of March.
So, so that be the 5th, the 19th would be the hoped-for date for adopting the budget?
Yes.
And the 26 would be sort of a contingency?
I think that's...
Yeah, it could be, I mean, it could be any, you know, for any topic. I mean, we've talked about building an additional work session dates too. That's the intention of February 29th. And it's a, it's a possibility for March too. We, we don't have to keep it, it's just, the sooner we get things on our calendars, the more likely we are to keep them.
And so we did build in an extra week.
Well, I, I would prefer to keep it to the, to regular, the 5th and the 19th and not the 26th. But if, if it's important to have that time reserved, I would defer to you, township manager Parker.
But it wouldn't be the 12th and the 26th for the second and fourth Tuesdays?
I, I'm guessing that they're shifted because of the election.
So yeah, we, we wanted to go on the...
There's an election in March?
We wanted to go on the, the, there's a presidential primary on February 27th.
Okay, but we're talking about March?
Yeah.
Yes, we are.
So why are things so shifted around there?
Yeah, so why, why aren't we meeting on the 12th and the 26th?
Because we had discussed wanting to have the budget adopted by not later than the 19th to give us backup.
We'll give us a run just in case we need it.
Because that's a legal deadline, so...
Oh, I see, okay, that's...
And unless somebody's busy on the first Tuesday of the month, which I don't think you are.
No, well, I... Could we set 5th and, 5th and 19th for sure? And if necessary, the 26th?
Yeah, you can always cancel one of them.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can always cancel by a majority of, of the members, a meeting. It's just a matter of getting it on, on the calendar.
Let's just leave it there and...
Well, it just, it happens to fall during the...
Spring break?
The spring break for public schools.
Spring break.
Yeah.
Oh, the March 26th?
The March 25th week is the week of spring break.
If I'm gone, I'm gone.
Yeah.
I was last year.
Well, I guess we'll hold on, we're, we're planning to hold on to it as a contingency, I guess that's the way that...
All the more reason to keep the 5th and the 19th.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the 26th.
I disagree on the 26th, but I'm not going to oppose...
Would you like to strike it?
I would move to strike the 26th because it's spring break. And if we need to add it, we can always add it.
Let's, let's aim to get everything done by the 19th.
I want to keep the pressure on for the 19th, to be honest. But I would move to strike it, the 26th.
So motion by riser to strike the 26th. Any other proposed changes?
Is the sequentialness of 6th and 13th, 6th and 13th rather than 6th and 20th of February? Feb 6th, Feb 13th?
Early voting for the 27th.
Oh, I see.
Begins on Saturday, February 17th.
All right, and that will be unavailable here, I'm with you.
And Thursday, the 29th of February.
That makes it...
Thursday, the 29th of February is an additional budget work session day, a, a, a board meeting where we're going to work with Plant Marianne and the manager on the budget.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, that's all more reason not to... March will be... All right. All right, so with, with the, the amendment proposed by trustee riser, are there any other comments? Start time is okay.
P3? End time of, by 11. Absolutely, end time, how about that? So motion here.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt the proposed regular meeting schedule with March 26th struck.
So moved by Flintoff, support by Brzezo, all those? Do we have to vote by?
No.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Item K4.
So this is just to set the first of two public hearings, which are proposed for March 5th. This is the hearing that we just did tonight for this fiscal year for the fire S A D. We would do on March 5th for next year's fire special assessment. And we're setting it now because we want to have both this fire special assessment, which is really a budgeting, you know, conversation, at the same time that we're doing the budget process. We've been off track doing it in the summer or the fall. We really should be doing it in March when we're doing budgeting. So this is to get us on track.
That will be every year after.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense, March thereafter.
I'm okay with that, but we have March 5th as a special meeting for budget, so...
Yeah, it's a meeting.
It's okay to add that to especially...
Sort of aligns with the budget process.
I agree, I'm for it.
It's a, yeah.
You know, you can have all your pub, public hearings on the same date.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's pretty much the same, you know, people coming out to same, to talk about the same topics.
And I will move the resolution.
Okay, moved by riser, support by Brzezo. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Resolution is adopted. Item K5.
Sense of theme.
The next one is just to set the required public hearing on the proposed budget for the same date.
I would so move.
Moved by riser, support by Brzezo, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item K6. Now this, I will turn to you for...
Okay.
Township manager Parker?
Well, the board included a position in the 2023-24 budget for a project manager position, which provides support to parks, paths, and preserves, the township manager in the administrative area. Also, the position would provide support to the roads advisory committee and the sustainability efforts underway for the township. Also, we would have this individual work directly with our planning consultant to help us in the zoning area as well. And the person that we're recommending is Christopher Chang, who currently serves on the planning commission, but will no longer serve if he's appointed to this position.
He would not be reappointed.
Yes. Chris is here tonight, in case you have any questions for him.
Good evening, board of trustees. Welcome. Is anyone have questions for Chris? Please, yeah, sure, more comments?
Chris, I'm, I'm so glad that you're a candidate and really excited that we're going to have a chance to have you on staff here at township. There's a lot to do. And, and really glad that you're available and willing to serve as a township staff person. I, I want to share just a little bit, like, the project manager position is new, we created it in 2021, establishing the position before we created the position of parks director. And so I know that as project manager, you know, Joyce has said, you know, kind of figure out where the priorities will be. But I just want to share a couple of my, my hopes about what areas the project manager will be able to take on. First, definitely roads, you know, staffing, the roads committee, roads S A D process, anything related to transit. We've never had anybody holding transit and TAP transportation alternatives, which are kind of one-off here and there. Certainly, the parks and pathways committee, which I know you also serve on, has taken on the pathways pieces. And I know that this would, position would support kind of the project management of the pathways and sustainability. I mean, when we originally envisioned this position, we thought that this position would really be like the climate change officer, the person really kind of staffing sustainability. And so I think it's a long overdue position. And know that it'll be maybe 50-ish, parks and paths, 50-ish, you know, general fund. I would love to, in the future years, see this position supported in part by some of the administrative cut of certain grants that we go after as well. But generally, I'm just really thrilled that you're able and willing to leave a job and come to us to, to be able to work for us. I just think that we're so lucky that you're going to be available to help us out.
Thank you for the kind words.
What?
Yeah. Well, no, as a resident, somebody... No, but I mean, I really think it's important as a resident, you know, working for the township, it, it means a lot. It, it, it means a lot to the, you know, what, what you bring to the position. And it means a lot to residents when they know another resident is serving in the township.
Township manager.
I failed to mention that Chris is looking at, starting about mid-January, that question came up.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Let's put a motion to, yeah.
Sure, is someone prepared to make the model motion to approve a conditional offer of employment to Christopher Chang to serve as project manager for SiO Township? The conditional offer being subject to satisfactory background and reference, Jeff?
And I would support that.
Okay, moved by Brzezo, support by riser. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, I need questions, but...
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
Chris, are you familiar with special assessments?
Not a ton. So I've worked with TAP, I've worked with the PPP, so it probably will be a learning experience for me also with special assessment districts.
Okay, okay. We're working in the road advisory committee, we're working on a policy right now to, you know, for the township, something that's going to be easy to follow. And working with also our legal team to review it, so you'll have support.
Great.
And also, you're on the PPP, uh, pathways preservation?
Correct, as, as a city, or I'm sorry, as a planning commissioner for the township.
Well, I see, so you won't be, you won't be on the PPP one, you know, the same. Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that, but thank you, yeah.
Are we now prepared to move to the vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to item K7. And this is the approval of conditional offer of employment to Aurora Northrup for the human resources generalist position. Aurora, would you like to come forward? And again, I'll turn to you, Joyce.
Oh, sure. Again, in our budget for this year, we have funding available for a part-time human resources journalist, generalist position. Mrs. Northrup is currently employed as an H R representative with Meyer. She previously served in a couple of communities, the city of Livonia and the charter township Plymouth in human resources for about eight years between the two communities. And so she is recommended for this position, given her background and her experience. Any questions?
I was very pleased to be part of the interview process with Aurora. And I'm very glad that we're able to bring you on board. I think I was impressed by your empathy during that. And I think you are going to really help us in terms of building a, a really strong team here. Not that we don't have a strong team, but you're going to strengthen our, our teamwork here at the SiO, at SiO Township.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It's nice to be here.
Further questions or comments for the candidate?
I just, I just wanted to acknowledge this is a new position. There's, I'm sure you've gathered a ton to do. We've never had an H R person. So there's, there's a lot of low-hanging fruit, a lot of hard work to be done, everything from benefits administration to classification and compensation, to, you know, Everything from benefits administration to classification and compensation to, you know, rewriting our personnel policies. So I just wanted to ask you generally, like, um, how would you approach kind of taking on this big adventure?
So one of the things I am used to is kind of getting thrown into something that wasn't there before, so to speak. So that has happened to me with other HR roles. I've been in HR for about twenty years and, um, in the private and public sector. So I feel like bringing that mix in will help that in terms of looking at it not only from the public sector, but from a private, what a business would, would do. Uh, and looking at it in, in pieces, not trying to fix everything all at once. Trying to look at what's the most important, um, reaching out, obviously, to, um, leadership in the different areas, so police, fire, administrative, et cetera, to find out what their opportunities are and where they are seeing their, their areas and their department going.
Great. I'm really excited, um, that you'll be, um, working with us and, um, and, and glad that you were able to come out tonight.
Thank you. I'm excited to, thank you.
Was someone prepared to make the model motion? Approval of a conditional offer of employment to Aurora Northrup to serve as Personnel Generalist on a part-time basis. A conditional offer being subject to satisfactory background and reference check.
I would so move.
So move by riser, support by Brizo. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion is, welcome aboard.
Uh, just as a addendum, um, one additional motion I wanted to offer because in the background, um, for this position, Joyce spoke to it, but I wanted to make it a little more plain um, with a motion for the record, which is, um, the recommendation that, um, part-time employees working thirty hours or more be provided healthcare, health insurance. Um, and so that was in the background there. And, um, because, um, as the record keeper, I wanna have good records. I'd like to offer a motion to codify that, um, which would be this. I'd offer a motion to amend the SiO Township Employee Handbook, Section Six Employment Status, Section Thirty-three Medical Insurance, and Section Thirty-five Dental Hearing and Vision Expense Reimbursement to reflect a policy that both permanent full-time and part-time positions working at least thirty hours a week are eligible for the benefits outlined in Sections Thirty-three and Thirty-five, period.
So there's a motion. Um, is there a second? So, um, support by trustee Carey? Uh, please, um, comment by Township Manager Parker.
Just a question. I know that, um, under the Affordable Care Act for employers with, um, fifty employees or more, the health insurance, uh, at thirty hours is required.
That's right.
Now, in checking with our labor attorney on those other benefits is prorated because, uh, the person is considered a regular part-time employee. So I didn't know how that, um, compared with the motion.
So would that be offered on a prorated basis?
I think with the other benefits, as far as.
The dental hearing and vision?
Uh, PTO.
Yeah, that's prorated already.
Prorated, but as far as the dental, I'm not sure on that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
As, as our policy stands right now, um, permanent, part-time get prorated, PTO and holiday pay. And so that's already prorated. That's untouched by this. Um, this would make, um, people working thirty hours or more eligible for the same benefits as those working full-time. So medical insurance and then the dental hearing and vision expense reimbursement is the thirty-five hundred-ish dollars. You know, reimburse up to eighty percent. So if we want to, um, Joyce, we could, um, indicate that that section, Thirty-five Dental Hearing and Vision Expense Reimbursement also be prorate, be prorated?
Yeah, that's what I was, where I was going with it. You should look at a proration.
Okay, so, um.
Well, amend your motion.
Yes, I do. Are eligible for the benefits outlined in Section Thirty-three, which is medical insurance and benefit, and prorated benefits outlined in Section Thirty-five.
Which is the dental.
Yeah. Does that work?
Yes.
So, right, what is gonna be prorated? Is the medical gonna be prorated or is the vision prorated or the dental prorated?
By medical, I mean health.
Health is not prorated. Dental, hearing and vision reimbursement would be prorated.
Okay.
Is that acceptable to use the second or?
That's what.
There are two people currently in the township. Um, with this hire, there would be two people that that would affect. It's, it's the norm, um, to have. There's thirty, um, people working thirty hours and more getting healthcare. It's the law for employers with fifty or more, um, and we're just under fifty. Yeah.
I sense, I sense we're ready for a vote. Um, can we vote for this? Uh, by voice vote?
Or is it roll, are we spending that? Is it a roll call?
Or amending the personnel?
We should do a roll.
Yeah, let's do a roll call vote, just to be on the safe side.
Parkway?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes, Brizo?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Motion adopted, five zero.
Okay. So that's, like, K seven plus. Well, K eight is where we are now. Um, this is possible action and approval of a conditional offer of employment to Kevin Jeffrey as building maintenance custodian worker.
So as everyone is aware, um, with Howard retiring, we're filling, uh, his position with Mr. Jeffrey. Uh, he has a background in other, uh, positions that he's held with building maintenance for other companies and he's also served, uh, as a self-employed person in that regard.
Are there any questions for Mr. Chairman?
I just wanna say you have a really impressive resume. Sounds like you've done a lot, um, of varied work. It's gonna, and have a lot of skills that you're bringing. And I just have a, a question, you know, one of the, um, priorities that this board has set is to, um, improve the energy efficiency of this building, to electrify the fleet, to go as green as possible. So could you talk a little bit about, um, you know, your, your feelings about that? Your approach, level of excitement?
Um, well, first off, good evening, board, um, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, as far as going green, um, there are numerous obstacles to obtain. Um, for instance, with solar, uh, you gotta look at the replacement of those panels, the maintenance of them, cleaning them. We're in a state where we have snow. Um, those panels have to be aimed in a certain direction. They have to be maintained, snow wiped off of them, and they have to be susceptible to getting the proper sunlight. Um, so that's just one area. Also, if you put them on roofs, you, you void your roof warranties. Right off the bat, you, you have potential for leaks and things of that. So all of that has to be taken into effect. Um, lighting, you can do numerous things with lights. Cutting out three of an old-style ball ballast light to one LED that uses less energy and is ten times brighter. So some of those things I am very familiar with.
Anything about, uh, generator maintenance by chance?
Um, I know someone. I, I have put in my own home generator, but.
How about electric, like, um, you know, appliances, devices, tools, lawn mowers, things of that? What experience do you have in converting from either four or stroke to cycle or to, uh, electric?
So with appliances, I'm a GE certified appliance tech. Um, I did take the course to work on GE Whirlpool Appliances. Um, with lawn mowers, I've done all of my own maintenance. Um, I was also a firefighter, so I had a lot of experience working on those rigs.
And how about electric devices, electric lawnmower, electric fleet, electrification? Going, like, you've been to Weingartz, I assume?
I have.
And you've seen how a lot of it's going electric, you have snow blowers and everything else like that.
Uh, my personal, I have a electric lawnmower and a gas lawnmower. Um, I do get far more use out of my gas than I do my battery. Um, one of the problems with battery is the maintenance of them. If they're left out in the cold, they're not properly maintained, you're throwing money away on your batteries. So if you're not taking proper care of them, you, you're not gonna get full use out of them.
What are you doing? We buy you a big old fancy, uh, electric this or electric that.
Make sure the battery is maintained properly.
Uh, so this is the, um, motion to approve a conditional offer of employment to Kevin Jeffrey to serve as building maintenance custodian, in, in the building maintenance custodian position for SiO Township. Conditional offer is subject to satisfactory background and reference check. Someone prepared to make that motion?
I would so move.
Well, sorry, goodbye riser, support by Brizo. You guys are like it. All right, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Welcome aboard.
All right, welcome.
This brings us to item K nine. And this, um, for this item, uh, revision to the Road Advisory Committee Resolution slash charge, um, I will turn to trustee Carey.
Thank you. So the, the Road Advisory Committee, we have, um, we're, we're getting our. And we've had some obstacles because, uh, with the road funding and special assessment policies and whatnot and, uh, reading, so we decided to start with the resolution and reading through this. And this resolution was originally adopted back in two thousand six or eight and then, um, reestablished in twenty-one? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, so some of it's a little outdated. Um, back then, when we first started working on roads or working with roads or whatever, then, um, there was a lot more different education that needed to happen, where we don't need to educate the, the road commission on how to build roads and whatnot. So there's just little things that were, um, removed. We kind of, we just polished it up. So I did include the original resolution and then I included the, the draft resolution where we're asking for some changes and those changes are in red. So, and I have to disclose something here in just a second, though. Um, so most of them were under our charges, um, A through G. We just kind of polished things up.
And so Jillian, that's in the, that's in this one?
You have your, the, the original resolution first and then the, the second.
Great.
Do you, do you have that?
Yep.
Perfectly in the red. And then, um, manager Parker had pointed out, um, we don't have an administrator anymore. We have a manager. So we changed. Um, I included that. No, the, the, um, committee did not, um, didn't go over the rest of it really because it was just pretty self-explanatory. And then from, in under expenditures, there's chairman and we struck that out to person.
I saw that. Well done. Very enlightened. I think that was, uh, Joyce. I think that was, uh, yeah, our, our township attorney from Grand Rapids, like, saying chairman.
Yeah, well, um, okay, so the, as I was, um, creating this draft and, you know, um, copying and pasting what the committee had said, um, I was reading through our policies and there's a couple of things that came up, um, that I thought maybe should be included here. Now, I, I did not, um, discuss this with the Road Advisory Committee. We've had, um, because of the election, we, our, our meetings pushed back to tomorrow, actually, instead of the first, um, Wednesday. So anyways, under membership, um, this is in our policy. So E, election of officers, election for officers, chairperson and secretary will occur at the November RAC meeting for the subsequent calendar year. The RAC, at its discretion, may choose to elect a vice-chair in other positions. So this could stay in our policy or this, I thought maybe it could fit in here and because if we're going to adopt it as a policy, why not have it in the resolution? Um, also, I, um, there's I attendance. We did have a member that was missing quite a few, um, meetings and it really, when somebody can't commit for whatever reason, other than an accident, because we also had another member that had a severe accident, we didn't want, you know, he wanted to stay on and he attended the meetings by Zoom. But anyways, we decided to include in our policy attendance. Should a member be absent for three or more meetings in a calendar year, the committee may choose to recommend to the Board of Trustees that the member be removed at any follow, um, at any time following the third absence. This goes, this kind of, um, goes hand in hand with, um, J. Committee members may be removed after a hearing by a majority vote of the Township Board. So I put that, um, I in front of that. So if the board would approve those two items, um, if you think that would be appropriate. The other thing that I came across as I was going through is, uh, we are short members on the Road Advisory Committee. Anybody wants to join, um, please put your application in. Well, Bob Hyde is on the Planning Commission. Jeff Human was on the, is on the Planning Commission, but was the liaison to the Road Advisory Committee. Well, what I realized when I read through our resolution is the only liaison that we need is from the board to the Road Advisory Committee. Then it got me thinking to read all the other bylaws and, um, resolutions of the other committees. There's not one word of having a board or a member be a liaison to another committee. So I think that we need to really seriously talk about this because that kind of, the more I thought about that is that we, since we have all these members, just kind of the shell and walnut game moving around, that blocks residents from applying, possibly. So that is not in the resolution. It's just something that I came across. Um, let's see, so in, uh, I did, in the background here, no, 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 under suggested actions, uh, um, we are asking for changes to the resolution that should be congruent with other committees. So this is another thing, is that in our Road Advisory Committee, it says to work collaboratively with the DDA, but the DDA does not have that in their bylaws. They can just tell us to go take a hike if they want. Um, I don't think they do that. But I think that, again, we need to be congruent between the committees if we're gonna work together. The Road Advisory Committee, uh, let's see, resolution, I'm sorry, does not have language for liaisons, okay. Um, clarify which committee takes the lead. Oh, on, this is, these are questions from the Road Advisory Committee members. Takes the lead, um, and/or funding on sidewalks and to clarify what type of sidewalk projects fall under each committee. So for example, the Z Road pathway, uh, part of that's a sidewalk. Some of it is, um, the connection. So who, who would that fall under? Would that be under the DDA? Would it be under Road Advisory Committee? Uh, the sidewalk gaps. And is this something that's, we're asking, this, that's not in the resolution, but these are things to consider. You know, we want answers because we, with the, the, the next round of road funding, however that looks, if sidewalks are going to be included, we need to have that in our, um, funding ask. And be specific with the types of sidewalks. Um, okay, and then the Road Advisor states, um, two items. Oh, that's what, I've already said that, under the membership, um, E and I. I think that's it.
And page, page one of, uh, one that's sort of marked up with red. Um, under membership, um, was there a change to item A at all?
No, just to E and I.
Okay, then item A is, is out of date. Should say, um, committee shall consist of eight residents of the township and one liaison appointed from the township.
Well, but that's in the second resolution. So that's why, unless you wanna change it and you have one resolution?
Yeah, I think, I think so.
Is that what you're asking?
Cause, cause what happened, what, what happened was we had, uh, resolution, um, looks like twenty-twenty-one thirty-seven. Um, that was adopted and then like a week later, there was a second resolution, twenty twenty one thirty nine, which amended that resolution. It kept it all, the resolution fully in place with the exception of that piece. Where it changed the membership of the Roads Advisory Committee to be eight members of Syo Township who have reached the age of eighteen years and have not, are not members of the Board of Trustees. Plus one member of the Board of Trustees who shall serve as liaison between committee and the board with full voting privileges on the Roads Advisory Committee. So yes, I I I do think that's a good idea if we um take your resolution and then just, you know, say that it um.
Unless you intended to reduce the number of members of the Roads.
I mean, we could because we're having a hard time filling seats.
I always thought eight was a strange number, but at the time, I know Kathy and Will felt very strongly about it.
It was a compromised resolve.
The Bobs.
The Bobs. So I guess it's up to you. I mean, the way that you put this forward, it would have seven, but it just, we have to acknowledge that's a change.
Well, because we have to have an odd number.
You should.
Right.
You don't have to.
Should.
Eight plus one makes sense, right?
But then if we only have four show up every.
Well, then you you set that through your quorum and you have a new policy about absentees.
So what, what? What do you want to do, Jillian? Do you want it to be seven or eight? What do you recommend?
So seven, um, eight, so there, if it was eight residents and the the um
Or liaison?
Board liaison, that would be nine.
Correct.
So if we had six members and one board, that would be seven.
That's true.
So we have, we have two vacancies right now. Don Nichols. Yeah, I mean, I in, yeah.
I mean, I don't know if we should do it based on who's vacant now. Let's do, what what was, what's going to work best for the RAC long term going forward? Is it going to be eight plus one liaison who's a voting board, voting member of the Board of Trustees? So then we just have to fill, we have to fill it with, you know, eight plus one, nine people.
Yeah, that's fine. It's fine. As long as, you know, anybody that joins wants to put the work, do the work.
And that is the key question with every committee.
So, so.
I'm okay with either one.
So under membership, three A, then Jillian, it'd be the committee shall consist of eight residents of the township. And I guess one liaison appointed from the township board.
Yeah, and.
Just stick with that language.
So that other, that second resolution from twenty.
Twenty one.
If we go forward with this, we would just, I'll I'll prepare a additional um resolve clause that basically says this replaces those two prior resolutions.
Great, yeah, let's clean this up.
And we want to incorporate, I assume, the provision where the Board of Trustees uh will have full voting privileges on the rack. Is that, that's what?
Well, it says liaison appointed from the board, township board. That is the same language as we use in others. I'm not saying it's good.
No, I I but I'm saying sometimes liaisons don't have voting. They're just liaise. They just go back and forth.
Yeah.
But but in twenty one, uh, twenty twenty one DS thirty nine, it specifically says that that person shall have uh voting privileges.
What do you think, Jillian?
Well, at the time, Kathleen, uh Kathy Noel was the designated liaison and my recollection is that that language was important to her in that resolution.
Yeah, I I think it should, I think it should be eight plus one and the one's BOT, she'll have a voting membership, I mean.
Well, it says all members of the committee shall be appointed by a much, oh wait, no, that's, I guess that's something different. Yeah, I mean, I mean, we we all vote now.
Right.
One liaison appointed from the township board with full voting privileges.
Well, essentially, it's 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 keeping the language that the board, that was most recently approved by the board.
Yeah, I'm just simplifying it. I I'm not concerned about children of mine.
Well.
Minor children.
Insert cheap shot here.
Okay, so eight plus one and then.
Well, and you know, yeah, and the the liaison should vote because if we're having eight residents and a liaison, it's nine and we we need to.
So I think these changes with with that, I think these changes make sense. I think you're getting into the charge. Is it okay if we move to that section now?
Oh, sure, sure.
Yeah, immediately.
So we're okay with manager in person?
Yeah. So I think, you know, I think the thing about the the Roads Committee and why it was good that we kind of reconstituted it. And I think it's natural to, after a year or so of it, to kind of revisit it, is we've had so many changes. Like, we have lost and I know we lost it and we acknowledged it. When we redid the PPP charge, we knew we were losing TAP. We knew, okay, where's TAP going? And we had a very deliberate conversation, I remember having it privately with Anna at this board table, that if it's not going to be with PPP, then where are sidewalks and TAP um projects going to be? Because in the absence of charging a committee, roads, I would propose, with those functions, then, you know, who goes after the federal TAP grants um becomes pretty non-strategic. And and that's what we've kind of been doing here. There's a lot of resources out there that we could be going after if we had kind of a strategy um about about sidewalks, particularly when we just, you know, use some funding to fill a gap. Um, people are starting to ask if sidewalks is something we do. So, I mean, Jillian, I I feel like it it should be in roads somehow, like the the sidewalks and TAP, because it's the road commission, it's some of the same partners, it's similar funding.
Yeah, and um Joyce, when we had our meeting with the road commission, we asked if they do sidewalks and they don't.
No, they don't.
They only do the ADA ramps if it, if they're redoing it. So that's where.
Crosswalks and ADA ramps.
Oh, yeah.
Right, so that's where, again, if we're roads and the um, the road commission doesn't do sidewalks. But we wouldn't be implementing sidewalks through the whole township.
We also don't do sidewalks.
No, but, but they do crosswalks, the road commission. They tell you where their crosswalks could go.
Yeah, and they tell us where we can go when we have certain asks.
I'm I'm not here.
So we're kind of stuck.
This is not advertising for the road commission. I'm just saying they have a role.
We need, we need them for crosswalks and other traffic calling.
Yeah, we can. Yes, absolutely. So, yes, um. And then the planning commission. So when there's a development that is on the table to be, you know, looked at, um, approved or denied or whatever, they take care of the the sidewalks within that development. So the Road Advisory Committee would have nothing to do with that. Now, we could, you know, um, if they needed, I guess, we don't have anything to do with it. Unless maybe we could, we can make it that any sidewalks that the Road Advisory Committee would oversee would be along the main drags or the main roads, something like that.
Well, you've also got a lot of sidewalk in the DDA district and you got a DDA that actually captures revenue that could be spent on sidewalks. And in fact, the DDA did pay as part of the Jackson Road project to put in sidewalks the entire length on both sides. So, uh, you know, we have multiple uh bodies, advisory bodies. In the the DDA's case, it actually has a revenue source that deal with certain pieces of the sidewalk puzzle.
Okay, so then what falls under the Road Advisory Committee?
Well, the language that's here, I think, you know, gives the Road Advisory Committee a role to play. It's a question of, you know, sort of priorities and what the Road Advisory Committee, you know, it has time and ability to focus on. I, in some ways, I think we have an opportunity with Chris coming on board as project manager to have somebody look at this and sort of help to sort it out and maybe see how to bring the different bodies, the three different bodies that I just listed together to, you know, to work on the the project, project, problem as a whole.
Yeah, and you know, the thing with the resolution is we can always come back and change it, you know, when we, um, as this grows.
Well, um, is there, is there some other problem that we're trying to resolve besides the changes that you proposed here? Or is that what all that we're looking at?
Yeah, the sidewalks has been, it's been a, a big discussion over and over again. And, you know, with all the different changes, um, we've been kind of floundering. So we're just, you know, working on what we can and we would like to have more direction.
Right.
And that's this.
I would leave, I would leave the Roads Advisory Committee focused on roads. And, you know, I think the idea was that, you know, the, there might be some kind of ancillary role for the Roads Advisory Committee in terms of cooperating with the Parks, Preserves and Pathways Committee after it absorbed TAP. And to some degree, the DDA and on various projects and sidewalks could be one of them.
Well, I I gotta say one thing, though. Like, let's take the federal TAP grant as an example. Okay, so the TAP committee goes away, we revise the charge for PPP. Deliberately, we strike out TAP. We strike out TAP from the charge of PPP so that it's only pathways. Narrowly define it as recreational pathways. We purposely, we create this gap, right? So that there's no one in, no, no committee or, you know, no, no policymaker, you know, policy advisory in charge of TAP. So what happens? The default, we're using, we go after federal TAP funding. We pay OHM to write our grants for federal TAP funding and they go to pathways mostly. Now, that may be the way we want to spend it, but that's just kind of the default. We're not actually looking at the TAP grants for kind of the broader, you know, TAP possibilities of crosswalks and things like that. And so we need somebody thinking about that stuff. So the default isn't.
Chris, that's who should be thinking about it, I think. Um, and I I I think, you you know, there may or may not be a problem there. But we're not actually actively pursuing TAP grants of, you know, right now at all. And part of the reason.
Which is another problem. I mean.
Well, part of the reason is that federal TAP grants are very cumbersome. They come with a lot of requirements, um, and um I'm not sure that that is the most effective source of revenue for Syo Township.
Well, we we should try, though, for any, any grants.
So.
Well, I I I I think that keeping the Roads Advisory Committee focused primarily on roads is is the way to go.
So do you want, so do you, would you prefer that we remove the sidewalk language?
I think it's fine the way it is.
So are we looking right now, are we kind of fly specking the A through G right now?
Yes.
Okay.
We're discussing it.
Yeah, yeah, because.
Yeah, you guys, you guys like to use that word, I know.
So I guess, can I?
Sure.
I don't know when it's my turn and I don't mind waiting if it's not.
I give you permission.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Jillian. So I'm I'm I'm, I've got them both up and I've got uh under A, you're adding utilized input from the community to make recommendations. And you're getting rid of with the natural environment and climate sustainability.
Right, so this is where we come to the what does that mean? Because um, if this is roads, we're stuck working, I mean, stuck working with the, with the road commission. Um, so we don't really have much of an authority over that.
Right. I, because the intention, the intention was to do it, you know, with as as little environmental negative impact as possible. And I think what Jillian's saying is practically, it's not our call. We have to go with whatever the road commission does.
And then under B, which is essentially the same, except you're adding react to public comments as they arise regarding the issues of maintenance and improvements to public roads.
We do that.
Okay, and then C. You you got rid of help the township to integrate public safety for pedestrian and non-motorized transportation as well as fire emergency response. That's kind of more like a PPP, non-motorized trail function.
That would be a, I think that's more of a TAP.
I I I I agree. I'm just, yeah, trying to go through it and then evaluate. Clarify their, one one that, one of the things you want to get rid of. Clarify the township's policy and role in a road or sidewalk special assessment district, SAD. And once approved by the township board, work to help implement SAD policy. So you're proposing to get rid of that, but yet you guys are working on a SAD policy. Why would you want to get rid of that as a, as one of your?
Getting rid of that, that is in, we combine that with C, I believe. Evaluate funding options, including special assessment district, state and federal support. We just merged it all together.
Okay, rather than a specific SAD and talk about SAD policy, right?
Yes.
Because one is actually develop, recommend SAD policy. So you're getting rid of your SAD policy oversight. And I'm not, I'm not criticizing.
So we could, we could include. What do you suggest?
I can, I guess I would defer to you and your experience on the rack, because you guys are looking at, I mean, there are all kinds of SADS. There's roads and rep, roads and policies.
Well, it's, it's Public Act one eighty eight and there's a lot of improvements under that. But roads and sidewalks would fall under that. Now, private roads are Public Act one thirty nine.
So you could have um a role that the committee, what you're saying is the committee could have a role with sidewalks that are funded by SADs.
Correct, so if a a neighborhood wanted sidewalks and um they wanted to have a special assessment to pay for, then we could use that special assessment policy and the procedures for that.
Well, I think that would be an ideal role, because it's sort of consistent. It keeps the SAD work within one place. If there were sidewalks that were funded by SADs, that's exactly the niche I would see for the Roads Advisory Committee.
Rather than PPP is non-motorized?
Yeah, because then they would have to, they'd have to be sort of like figuring out SADs.
So the special assessment funding would fall under, because, I mean, if they wanted streetlights, that could be in a special assessment.
Right, I think that's right too.
Like if, like if.
We're not doing, we're not doing swamps, though.
But it's highly, yeah, I mean, it's highly tactical. I mean, we, part of what we're trying to fix is the the absence of a township special assessment process that residents can engage in. So if they come to us and say, hey, we want to fix our street, we can give them guidance, do it. Or we could just say, no, go to the road commission, right? But we want to be able to say yes and help people through the process.
The road commission could provide a special assessment for roads. But if we go, we could, and there's different, it's a different law, different procedures. But, you know, ideally, what I would like is if a resident comes to the township and says, my neighborhood's considering paving a gravel road. We would hand them a packet and say, here, this is what you start with. So getting back to if we, let's put in here under, I don't know, we could GHI, something like that, about special assessment policies and procedures for uh roads, sidewalks and.
Is what was in there, would, what was?
Clarify.
What is what is already in there now sufficient? Clarify the township's policy and role in a road or sidewalk special assessment district, current SAD. And once approved by the township board, work to help implement SAD policy. Can we just keep that in there?
Yes, well, but then we we can't do that on our own. We have to have, I guess, a project manager.
No, I, no, I, I agree. I'm not, listen, I'm not, this is not an assignment. This is just something that you guys, you know, it, one of the many things you folks do. I mean, I I don't think it's.
All right, so let's put.
And you're already doing that, it sounds like. Aren't you?
We're evaluating the SAD policy right now. So why don't we just put back in E? I mean, E, but it would have to be a different.
Yeah, and and I think instead of clarify, we could change it to recommend a township's policy and role. I mean, you know.
Right, because clarify means we already have something there. Right, because clarify means we already have something there.
Yeah, I mean, all we want is a recommendation for the board, so you understand.
Study and recommend, analyze and recommend.
So let's add E back in with, you want study and recommend, John?
Yeah, why don't we put that in as, um, C, as D, and then we'll move everything else, because that goes right, or we can even put in as C.
Evaluate, recommend, study, recommend, one of those words.
Okay.
Because it sounds like you're doing it.
And, and Gillian, you raised some really good points earlier, which kind of cut across our committees. I will say our township attorney, I know is drafting up a, a policy for committees on, um, potential application of kind of standards for some of our committees. I know this, this came up with one of our, our other committees of, you know, timeliness, of having agendas posted, um, compliance with the OMA. And so it's something we're talking about internally, and I think we could consider some of the kind of input you have across our committees for that policy as well. So I think that's good, good input. Um, I, I do have a question though about E and F. This, this, this partner and collaborate language?
Well, that's in the original language, but that had, that's a transportation alternatives planning committee. So partner with the Planning Commission Parks Preserve, or PPP now, committee to integrate sideways. See, this is right.
Is that at all realistic? I guess, I guess what I want to say is practically speaking, I mean, you know, collaborate with the DDA, that's fine, right? I mean.
They have roads.
Yeah, I mean, you can collaborate with the DDA, it's another entity. Partnering with the Planning Commission, partnering with the PPP. Today, what does that look like?
I don't know, the only thing I know is that there's, um, a liaison or was a liaison from the Planning Commission of the PPP. And that they had some of those members, um, and this was before I was chair, created a subcommittee to come up with the type of road funding, but they had members from these other committees on this. And it didn't make sense to me, because we had members that were not utilized. So I don't know what our role is, I just know that it was in the original language, of course.
And I think it's a good thing, I mean, partnering with the Planning Commission, the PPP, I just think prac- practically, we need to figure out a structure to help these groups talk to each other. I mean, certainly none of, all of them are advisory to us. And so the Planning Commission has a role, you know, with particular projects coming through the door. Um, the PPP with the recreational pathways.
But the thing is, is that we don't, the Road Advisory Committee has nothing to do with parks and pathways. The only thing that possibly we would have is the, is it the Van Curler, um, there's a cross, uh, there's, I think it's on Huron River Drive, the One Preserve, and then there's the Delhi, and there's the crosswalk, you're not familiar with this?
Yeah, I, I am, I, I, I think in some ways, what I would prefer is to leave the language there encouraging collaboration or partnership or whatever. It doesn't have, it's not like we're putting a big burden on you, and we have someone coming on board who may be able to help facilitate that kind of partnership occurring.
Right, I mean, this has been totally unstaffed, right?
And, okay, yeah, and I, I would like to get clear, clarity on this, you know, for our committee, because we just.
Clearly, it's, it's not the top priority for the Roads Advisory Committee, but it's, I think it was intended back in 2021, um, when part of our goal with this committee and all of the committees was to encourage, um, communication between them, so they weren't working independently and that potentially at cross purposes with each other.
Yeah, and that's where my idea of having the chairs meet, have an ongoing meeting with the chairs of the.
Well, that's, that's another way of doing it, but, you know, having members who are having, you know, appointments, you know, from, for example, the Planning Commission and the Roads Advisory Committee is a way of ensuring that there's, you know, that connection, just like having board reps, you know, as liaisons to committees helps to keep us connected to the committees.
Yeah, but then it, you know, I would like to see more residents outside instead of the same people over and over again. Um, so that's where, I mean, partner with, what does that mean? We just need clarity on this, but this can, we can table that for now.
Yeah, I mean, I think that goes, I mean, eventually it'll get refined enough to the point where there's actually a protocol, right? I mean, and, and it'll tie to the master plan, and it'll tie to, you know, priorities for projects coming in, you know, certain, you know, standards that we're going to require. I would also suggest that at the end of this, Gillian, we add a be it further resolved, this resolution replaces in full resolutions, 2021 37 and 2021 39.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
Oh, okay, yeah, and then the last one is perform special studies tasks as delegated by the Board of Trustees.
Why, why didn't you change that from other functions, which would have included us?
Perform other functions as the township board may delegate, because we're not doing toilets.
Okay, and then when we delegate that, I'm not going to vote for that, but, but I, I'm just.
Okay, so that's kind of open, like, all right, we've got this whole long list of things to do, and then you're gonna, what, what other functions are you gonna give us? And we, we just want clarity and direction, and it just seems like.
I, it's funny, if this, if this is more comfortable.
This committee has been unstaffed, I mean, this committee has been unstaffed, and I just wanna,
Right, we've been staffed.
I just want to acknowledge that, you know, that's, that's been a big part of it. It's new, okay, newly reformed, newly formed, reformed, um, formally established, and it's not head staff. And so, I mean, I think that that's just part of the natural growth of it. I think it's good to bring it back and kind of, you know, make it better. We can look at it again in a year and see, but I really think that, um, having a staff person who's responsible for, you know, looking at grants, looking at transit, looking at transportation, looking at roads, um, you know, across these areas, I mean, will be helpful.
Yeah, and that's where we've come into, well, if we had a township manager or a, or somebody to go to, this is before, then, you know, we, we were really stuck in a lot of, we didn't, like, we're working on a SAD policy, we couldn't put in there, um, work with the township manager, because we didn't have one. And then who would that fall back on? So yes, let's, let's, um, these changes, and then what you have also included, what if we had?
I'm gonna support the changes, this is something we should do tonight, or should?
No, we need to.
Just bringing it back, and we do it, put it on the next agenda.
Oh.
Do we want to do this tonight, or table it till the next meeting, when we can have it come back as modified and? Expect likely.
It doesn't matter.
I prefer, I prefer we do it tonight, if everybody's comfortable.
Are you comfortable?
I mean, it'd be, it would ni- it would be nice to check something off our to-do list for the Road Advisory Committee.
No, I, I'm, there's just lots of changes you've got on.
Do you like, yeah, let me, let me just review what they are, so looking at this. Um, under membership, a committee shall consist of eight residents of the township and one liaison appointed from the township board, who shall have full voting privileges with the Road Advisory Committee. Under the charge, C, um, oh, apologies, that stays the same. Um, under the charge, we're gonna add E back in, E from the other page, and we're gonna say, instead of clarify, recommend the township's policy and role in a road or sidewalk special assessment district, and once approved by the township board, work to help implement SAD policy. We're gonna change that from clarify to study and recommend.
I do, just.
Yeah.
Uh, did, did we remove road or sidewalk special assessment? Or should we just have special assessment district for any type of improvement under Public Act 188, other than swamps?
I think, I think road or sidewalk is in a program, yeah.
I think that's good, yep, I think it.
Okay, and you can still, we could still use that policy for streetlights or whatever.
Yeah, all right, that's fine.
As a board, yep.
And then, um, the rest stays the same. Um, with the final be it finally resolved, this resolution replaces in full resolutions, 2021 37 and 2021 39.
Support.
So moved by Flintoff, support by Reiser, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed. Done with that item, item K10.
Thank you, Gillian.
This is the resolution to express the township's position on the application for annexation by the city of Dexter. Um, and, um, we have with us two members of the annexation committee who are putting this forward. So I'll turn to where Clintoff and Trustee Reiser.
Okay. Great, um, we were, um, appointed, um, and have submitted two written reports. They were included in links, submitted on July 21st and August 24th. Just as a quick reminder, Kathy, John and I were appointed to, um, represent the township in any conversations related to the annexation. Um, Dave Lutton has been before this board at the city council to talk about, um, his three-part plan. Um, to us, our charge was to look at the annexation. Um, he has an annexation request pending with the city of Dexter, and has been pending with the city of Dexter since May 17th to annex 45 acres of Scioto Township. Um, we had, I think, some good meetings, three meetings, with the, um, respective city of Dexter reps. Um, we had internally, we did some fact finding, we had a meeting with our open space consultant, our parks director, our manager. Um, we talked a lot about what are the township, um, goals for this. Um, you know, related to any open space preservations, um, pathways, connectivity, anything we might do with, um, any part of the Sloan Kingsley property, if it were available. In the meantime, um, the Land Preservation Commission, um, actually passed a motion recommending that the entire parcel be prioritized for preservation. Um, throughout our discussions, whether we're talking about, um, any sort of benefit to Scioto, um, we could not find any benefit to Scioto at this time. Um, we recognized the ongoing importance of communication with the city of Dexter. We all expressed our desire to continue to have good relationships with the city of Dexter, um, and know that there are some planning issues, um, that we could talk with them about in the future. Um, but importantly, um, the city of Dexter has not responded yet to Mr. Lutton's application to annex us. And so, um, it begins to be, um, a conversation about a big nothing burger that we want to, uh, take a break from, um, because it's going nowhere and it's really not our place, and I don't think serves the township. In fact, I think it hurts the township to remain in conversations about something that clearly doesn't represent, um, benefit for Scioto Township, so that's why, um, and we reviewed this with, uh, Dave, uh, earlier this afternoon, um, when we met. Um, so there's two resolved clauses, that the township board agrees that the proposed annexation request does not promote or meet township goals of open space preservation or pathways. And that be a finally resolved, that until a formal request for annexation of the property is received from the city of Dexter, Scioto Township Board of Trustees declines to engage in further discussions regarding the city of Dexter's pending applications, application dated May 17th from Baker Road Land Holdings LLC.
Anything further you'd like to add, Trustee Reiser, as the other member of the committee?
When you said the LPC, the entire parcel, that's not the entire 45 Baker parcel that's proposed to be annexed. That's the entirety of several parcels that collectively would be the Sloan Kingsley.
Exactly.
Parcels on the west, to the west of Baker Road, and several parcels to the east, so it.
245.
Why don't we clarify that?
I, I, I think I just, it's all the, all the parcels that comprise the 237 acres.
Yeah, and that, that's what was intended in there. Mariah cited this particular parcel number, and based on what you're saying, it doesn't seem to represent the full.
What, well, one of the parcel numbers represents the 45 acre, but, but in total, there's several parcels, six or seven parcels.
So either you add the other parcel numbers, or you take out the parcel number entirely.
I think we say the entire Sloan Kingsley property.
That, that solves the problem.
So I have a suggested amendment, John, if this gets to it, in that group, whereas the Land Preservation Commission has recommended the entire Sloan Kingsley property for preservation by the township.
That's fine.
Okay.
Or parcels, but yes, yes.
Okay.
Really, Baker LLC parcels, but yeah. It's euphemistically called Sloan Kingsley, but it's owned by Baker Holdings LLC, if that makes a difference. And I, I have it in my car if we need it, I can run out.
I think this is okay, it's a whereas clause.
We titled it Sloan Kingsley, so it matches.
That's fine, yes.
Um, but definitely, you know, both sides have discussed in, in good faith. I think it's really important that both jurisdictions had a chance to talk to each other directly, um, not just with the applicant, but to actually talk about if it's something either side, um, was interested in. Um, again, um, if and when the city of Dexter, you know, answers, Mr. Lutton, um, we may, you know, hear back, and then engage further.
Does someone prepare to make the final motion? Move, okay. Move by Carrie, support by Brazil, to approve the attached resolution to express, express township's position on the application for annexation by the city of Dexter, approximately 45 acres of the quote Sloan Kingsley unquote property.
As amended.
As amended. So maybe it's to approve the attached resolution as amended.
Sure.
Because we're not amending the property. Is there further discussion?
Can we do a roll call?
Yes, you could do a roll call.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes, Brazil?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Reiser?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, five zero.
Okay, that brings us to public comment. This is the time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. Trustee Brazil, will you serve as our timekeeper again? And, uh, we start with those who are present, um, please come forward.
You just would be surprised if I didn't say anything. Uh, Kathleen Brand, Scioto resident, um, I want to ask a question about, um, there was a comment on the RAC commission, um, where one of the members had, uh, had a medical situation and, uh, attended via Zoom, uh, was that as actually attending and able to, uh?
Did that participate?
So, so there's an effort for the, uh, our attorney to set, establish procedures related to the Open Meetings Act for all, um, commissions, committees. So if someone asked for a medical accommodation, could they not attend?
Qualifies under ADA.
Right.
Um, only for any public body. ADA, um, then would be granted, but like, tonight, we have two board members not here, they couldn't.
I'm just talking specifically if someone had a medical situation, that they could ask for accommodation.
They qualified under ADA.
And they could participate in, okay. So thanks for clarifying, that would be nice to put in the regulations.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, uh, I want to talk about the, the last resolution you just passed regarding the, uh, uh, Sloan property. Um, at, I attend a lot of these meetings, so at the last LPC meeting, um, Mr. Lutton said that he had a conversation with John Reiser about the property and arsenic on the west side, the property that was the parcel that's on the west side of the, the road. And I do recall this entire situation was, um, very unfortunate that our supervisor decided to have separate conversations with Doug, Dave, Mr. Lutton, with our land preservation, um, consultant, and never informed the board. And so this struck me as, is it appropriate for Mr. Reiser to have separate conversations with that, uh, Mr. Lutton?
And I can answer that once you're done speaking.
Uh, because I don't think it is appropriate for you to have separate conversations with Mr. Lutton. It leads the appearance that part, that Scioto Township. It leads the appearance that part, that SiO Township supports his efforts by merely having a conversation about arsenic remediation. And I don't think that's appropriate. And um, so this is out of Mr. Lutton's mouth, so that's how, how it came about. Thank you.
In response, Mr. Lutton called me and I told him my concerns, or one of my concerns was that there's arsenic on that western parcel. I let the LPC people know that and I let people on our committee know that. So it's not like I reached out to Dave and said, hey, what can we do about the arsenic parcel? He called me and my reports have my mobile number in there and people call me. So as a township resident, he, like any other township resident, is entitled to call me. And I'm gonna take anybody's calls. I've had calls with other people in this room and I'll take people's call who call me.
Is there further public comment from those who are present in the meeting hall?
And I, I do just want to say, say one thing about Dave Lutton because he did send a communication to the board to saying like, oh, does the board need to approve the committee to, to meet with me or something? I'll just say, for, for the three of us, for the committee, we have had no conversations with David Lutton. It's safe for today. We had a half hour conversation with him in person um to let him know what we'd be moving forward with tonight. So on behalf of the committee, I just want to share because I know that's why we created the committee, um was to give the board and residents assurance that all of this was going to be dealt with um in a straightforward way. And that's why we produced both written reports and then tonight's resolution. So I expect after tonight's resolution, the annexation reps should have no more conversation with David Lutton um regarding annexation until any one of us should, until we hear from the City of Dexter. That doesn't mean that Dave Lutton doesn't have a pending application with the LPC. He does. That doesn't mean many hands has not approached the township about developing a project there. Those are completely separate from the annexation request, which we have said no for now too.
Public comment, Ms. Stein.
Pat Stein, SiO resident. I have no prepared statement tonight, but I do want to give some observations. Trustee Carrie, thank you for bringing the resolution for changes to the Road Advisory Committee. It was refreshing to see this group working so well together to iron out what needs to be completed before voting. However, I think that all the time that was spent to iron things out could have been done in a working session. Trustee Carrie has asked time and again, when you're gonna have some working sessions? And there's never response. As a matter of fact, today supervisor has, I rushed to just dismiss what she was saying to move on to the next subject. Why do we not get any feedback as to why there can't be working sessions? Is there a reason? Does she need to submit it in writing? Is there some step that's missing? Why? If someone could answer. Okay, so moving on. Supervisor Hathaway, you use a phrase that you use quite often, so over the years, to be in our supervisor, I disagree. But I'm modifying that. I strongly disagree that the voters should not be presented with another option to vote on for fire. There needs for a fire department. I think now is the time. The people are realizing that it is an issue, so come up with a plan to present. But I would not hesitate to present something to the voters at the next opportunity. And I say this from my personal experience, uh, a couple hours after a meeting, a meeting last month, I ended up having a uh close and personal interaction with SiO's EMTs, which led to HVA staff, EMTs. And I want to tell you, we are, we are in deep, we are in the deep creek as far as relying on, relying on HVA. We don't have a contract with them and they themselves are having a staffing issue. They've expanded over the last maybe two years to add more and more townships. And if they're having staffing issues, they're gonna, they're gonna cut some things off and that one thing might be SiO Township. And where would that leave us? We need to beef up our own SiO Township Fire Department's EMT capabilities and emulants. So if people realize that it's not just, I, I mean, I know supervisor Hathaway, you mentioned there's other things that you need to give your attention to. Talking about life and death here, and I think that's a very high priority. Anyway, give us some thought. I strongly disagree with your thinking that we need to back off on presenting something for the voters to vote on for regarding our fire. I think we need to move on it, move on it soon. Thank you.
The acoustics in the hall are terrible tonight, by the way. Kim Boyd, a SiO resident. Think long and hard. I hope the supervisor doesn't set aside the discussion about how and when to pursue better fire department funding. And I hope he is not looking at combining uh the sheriff and the fire um together. Uh, history in other communities shows that the fire or the sheriff department sucks funds from, from those fire departments when they're put together. We have enough problems funding our fire department. We don't ne- need to add another level. Think long and hard. That's a red flag. Um, it's, it's a sweep under the rug comment to me and you've used that, that language before. Um, and you know, you still haven't addressed the recommendations. Previous administrator rally uh left this board mid twenty twenty-two. So uh you new people, I, I want you to take that to heart. Don't let this board uh linger and not uh make some direction. Like Pat said, it is life and death and it is safety of both our firefighters and our residents. Thank you.
Anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment? Let's turn to those participating remotely.
Rob Pattinson, you're up first. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Pattinson, SiO Township resident. Uh, first of all, uh, thank you, Christie, for the excellent running of the cameras shifting back and forth between the speakers. As usual, great job and thank you for being there for this whole meeting. Very well done. Um, coming up December second, you have a meeting um about planning. And I hope you are starting to think about the PUD, public benefit. Now that we've lost the uh funding source for the fire department, I hope you will think about using the public benefit aspect of the PUDs to supplement the funding for the fire department that is desperately needed. Uh, we need to get a policy in place because right now it's a very reactionary uh process where you're just dealing with whatever is in front of you, whatever proposal is in front of you. We need to establish a clear, fair and transparent policy so that developers coming in know what will be expected of them and um the residents will know what is happening with that public benefit money. And then lastly, um uh, this board has a lot of soul searching to do. And for, I am extremely happy with the new hires tonight. And for those of you sitting in the audience or in the, not in the audience, in the uh uh, in the seats with the residents, um, this is not about you. This is entirely about the board. In the last four years and ten months since a firefighter was hired, we have hired a lot of people in SiO Township. In four years and ten months, we have not hired a single firefighter. Four years and ten months. That, in my opinion, is number one, unforgivable. And number two, you say that safety is the top priority of this board. And in four years and ten months, your actions have not followed your words. So you have some soul searching to think about and to do about um how you want to keep residents safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Anyone else want to speak in public comment? Please raise your hand. No hands are raised.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at ten forty.